I'd like to bring the special city council meeting to order. Susan, would you call the role please?
Yes, Mayor Downey.
Here.
Mayor Potem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Smith here.
Here.
Councilmember Mullaka.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escobett.
Here.
Thank you. I now move to go into executive session pursuant to section 4.5, parent B of the City of North Glen Home Rule Charter for the review of applications for any appointed position. Interviews and appointments shall be conducted at an open meeting. I need a second, please.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in executive session. And what I think I should do, just so, just to kind of refresh your memory of who we are, and we'll go around and introduce ourselves one more time. Yeah.
Sounds great.
Joyce Downey.
Carol Dodge.
Tom Mullaka.
Joe Brown.
Heather Kim Stentinger.
Morning, Jordan Sowers.
Morning, Becky Brown.
I'm Todd Escobett.
Marcie Whitman.
Good morning.
If you would like to kind of go into the work plan that you have?
Yes, that sounds great. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I'm Heather Geier, and I am honored to be here this morning with you to share North Glen Forward. North Glen Forward is my first year game plan that is really designed to be a roadmap for my first year as your next city manager. The roadmap is built and designed to bring stability and strong leadership to the city of North Glen. Through my conversations with the directors and managers on the staff leadership team, as well as many of you, the key common theme that I heard was potential. And so, in reflecting upon what skills and attributes I could bring to the city of North Glen, I thought of this quote by Jim Collins, who's a management guru who wrote, oh goodness, I just forgot. "Good to Great and Great by Choice," thank you, which says, "We cannot predict the future, but we can create it." And I thought that really exemplified the position that the city of North Glen is at today in terms of being at a crossroads, and there is so much potential that exists within this community, that the North Glen Forward Plan is really designed to help capture that momentum and continue to move things forward. So there's four key action steps that consist of North Glen Forward. Develop a prioritized work plan. Creation of management priorities. Organizational and community engagement. And then update the strategic vision and goals. The first and foremost action step that's part of this plan is to develop a prioritized work plan. In reviewing the February 1st study session where David and Brooke presented some ideas about bringing some of the major projects that are shown on this slide to NARA and the steering committee, as well as planning commission, my observation is that we really need to develop a prioritized work plan, that these projects represent priorities within the planning side of things, but there are many other priorities that exist within the city of North Glen. And so, my recommendation within the first 60 days is to come to you all, and we have a retreat or a work session, it could be a study session, and we go through and we prioritize what the priorities need to look like for the next year. And I've included a table where I've used the high priority, medium priority framework. It could be something else that we developed that's agreed upon, could be actually ranking 1, 2, 3, 4 in terms of prioritization, but this is really just an example for illustrative purposes for you to better understand how I'm thinking about this. So the second action step would be creation of management priorities, and so I see this happening in terms of starting my role as city manager, leading up to when we come to you and present recommendations on what priorities could look like. As I mentioned, the priorities shown on the previous slide, they're very externally focused to the organization, and I believe that there's an internal focus that's missing. And so, one of the things that I want to do is be able to sit down with the staff leadership team and talk about what else is out there, what needs to be on the table in terms of internally focused priorities that we need to be thinking about in the next two to three years. Part of that discussion, from my perspective, needs to be, okay, we're going to rank priorities, but what do we need to streamline? What do we need to stop doing, if we need to stop doing something? And what do we need to add? So, the city has limited resources, and if we want certain things to be a priority, we may need to add something, maybe time limited staffing positions and planning to help keep things moving forward, really just depends. So I think that's an important part of the discussion that I'm hoping to bring to you, but really utilizing the staff leadership team to help develop what those recommendations look like. And in the end, the goal is to have a comprehensive prioritized work plan. The next step is organizational and community engagement, and this really consists of four subcomponents from my perspective. And I'm going to go through each subcomponent, but I'm not going to read all of the sub-strategies that are outlined in your memo. For elected official engagement, I believe we have a good foundation in terms of building rapport already, but what I'd like to do is reach out to each of you and really establish a flow in terms of what your communication preferences are. Do you like to meet in person? Do you like to text? Do you like to have phone calls on a regular basis? And really continue to build that communication channel. For staff leadership team engagement, one of the primary things in coming into the organization is really getting up to speed on all the projects that are happening. I think with the tours yesterday and the opportunity to meet with the management staff, I have a good feel for what's happening. I think the next step is to really sit down and talk about what the timelines with projects look like, and figure out where I fit in to where the projects are at currently, and make sure that it's a seamless transition and that I know what I need to do in terms of what additional communication you all need with the status of projects, and figure out how to keep things moving forward. For employee engagement, I'm excited about all of these bullet points, but first and foremost, the one to two shadow days a month, I believe this is my boots-on-the-ground approach to really getting to know staff and getting to know the breadth of services that we provide. I think it's really important for me as the next city manager to be visible within the organization, and I want to get to know employees at all levels within the organization. And I find this to be a fun opportunity, which is really important to me. I think having the one-on-one contact with employees opens up the opportunity for employees to speak very openly and honestly with me, share any concerns that they might have, as well as, hey, we're kind of lacking in this area, could you take a look at whatever resources we need, and that sort of thing. In terms of community engagement, I view this as immediate and ongoing throughout my tenure as city manager here at the city of North Glen. And I think most importantly, what I heard from talking with all of you and staff is to be visible and accessible. I like to be engaged with the community, I like to be out in the community in terms of attending community events, and so I view this as a very natural step that I'll be taking and working at the city of North Glen, and really excited about it. Then the action step four is an update the strategic vision and goals, and I view this as a mid-year of year two item. Right now, from what I can tell from my research, there's a few different vision-related goal statements out there. We have the 2014 revitalization goal statement and measurable milestone goals underneath that statement, and many of those were shown on the previous slide that are used from Brooke's presentation. And then we have goals and strategic plans outlining five goals with the business principles. And I think they're a bit disjointed from my perspective, and so in year two, I'd like to tighten those up and see where we're at from our prioritized work plan, and come up with a better communication document that we use to communicate with the community. I think this is really one of the communication tools that we use to demonstrate value to our citizens and help them see what that strategic vision is. I've included some strategic icons that we use at the city of Wheat Ridge as just an example of how we can better communicate what an upgraded city infrastructure and facilities might look like. And with that, I'll leave you with one last Jim Collins quote, which is, "Great vision without great people is irrelevant." And I want to commend you on the dedicated staff that you have here at the city of North Glen. It's been a lot of fun and very inspiring to get to know everybody, and I'm very excited about what this opportunity in leading the organization looks like. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Great. Questions, for you. Any questions about the work plan? No? We're going to go right into the questions.
Okay.
And so, first of all, is there something you want to tell us before we get started? That you'd like us to know about?
Well, okay. See here. Well, I'm very excited to be here. I'm honored to be here. This is my first city manager process that I've been part of, and becoming a city manager has always been a long-term goal for me, something that's on the five, 10-year horizon, and now it's here, and I'm very excited about it. I did quite a bit of research in terms of prior to applying for this position and throughout the process, and really trying to wrap my arms around, would I be a good fit for the city of North Glen, and what can I bring to the table as city manager for you all? And I feel that my skill set in working at the city of Wheat Ridge and just the 16 years that I've been in local government, I have a strong passion for local government, and I feel like my professional journey has brought me here, and I'm excited to see what the future holds.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Carol?
Good morning, Heather.
Good morning.
First, I really just wanted to thank you for all the work that you've put into everything you've presented to us. I mean, it means a lot that you've put a lot of time, and you can see that you've put a lot of time into it, and I really appreciate it.
It's been fun.
So, thank you. Okay, first question for me is, give us an example of a time when you had to reduce expenses, and how did you determine where to cut costs, and what were the impacts?
Sure. Well, through our annual budget process at the city of Wheat Ridge, and I serve as budget manager, Wheat Ridge is unique, we don't have a finance director. I serve as budget manager, I have an accounting supervisor, an accounting technician, and a payroll specialist. So we're very lean on the finance side of things, and then my city manager is very involved from that higher level perspective related to finances. So, on an annual basis, we are required to balance the budget prior to bringing it to city council for the budget retreat and then later adoption. Last year for the 2016 budget, we needed to cut about $775,000 based on proposed budget requests from directors. And so, the way we go about that, we do a couple of things. We always receive new staff position requests if the city manager is open to that. In the past, I believe, three years, we've made that something that directors can submit. Any type of new technology request, we have a separate form for. And so, as we sit down with directors and we go through the budget process and have discussions about what priorities look like in Parks and Recreation versus Community Development, I start making a list of potential items that may be reduced if they're not high priorities. And so, when we get to the point where we know what we need to cut in order to balance the budget, we have an existing list. I typically go through and make recommendations to my city manager on what I think could be cut, and then he'll go in and have additional discussions with directors and make sure it's something that could be postponed for a year, two years if needed, and then he'll confirm those reductions. And that's worked really well. We go back and communicate that with department directors, and typically based on the communication that I have and that my city manager has in that process, directors understand why those reductions needed to be made.
So can you see an impact? Like, you know, how did the directors handle when you have to come to them and cut, you know, cut projects, that type of thing?
I think we've built a very collaborative environment with reductions. I think that there's an understanding that reductions typically happen each year, it's just a fiscal reality, given our tight budget constraints that we have. As we've seen sales tax grow in the city of Wheat Ridge, and 60% of our general fund revenue is sales tax, so, you know, definitely the last couple of years have looked better than previous years. So I think they understand, we have a really open dialogue, so we know what the priorities are. An example for you is, a couple of years ago, we decided to put replacing the firewall for IT on hold, and that really involved me talking with my IT manager and getting a better sense of, can we put this on hold? That's a huge capital expenditure, and it was potentially at risk of needing to have one more year to put that on hold, but what we decided to do was move that to the Equipment Replacement Fund, which is a special fund that had funding available, and so we're able to take care of it that way in 2016, rather than having it in the general fund. Sure.
Kayla?
Good morning, Heather.
Good morning.
There was a story on NPR yesterday that according to the National Association of Politicians, millennials now make up the largest segment of homebuyers in the nation. What innovative ideas do you have to ensure that North Glen stays on the cutting edge of this new marketplace?
Yeah, and I believe also part of that story is, or a related story, is that millennials are great savers. And so I think North Glen has a tremendous amount of opportunity just based on location, proximity to Denver, and what I've found in talking with many of you, as well as others that I know who live in North Glen, is North Glen is a community that people want to come back to, which I think is huge from a marketing perspective. And I think the housing stock that you all have is great. I think there's some different things that we could do in looking at incentives to help individuals, you know, get into their first home, increase homeownership, and that could be through NARA providing an incentive program very focused on the millennial generation, and it could be broadened to Gen Xers, it doesn't have to be just millennials. I think in terms of being strategic about the different main economic development sites, the marketplace being probably the biggest, as well as Carl's Farm, and being intentional about what type of housing could potentially be on those sites, and then what kind of mixed-use retail, commercial would potentially develop around those sites. So I think there's some different partnerships that could be developed with NARA that are very focused on and unique to the city of North Glen. I think in Wheat Ridge, we work with an organization now called Local Works that used to be Wheat Ridge 2020, and several years ago, they had a program where they'd go in and they'd rehabilitate foreclosed homes, and that was really successful. Now, I know the city of North Glen has low foreclosure rates, which I think is great, and that may be where more of just an incentive package to attract millennials to come to the city of North Glen would be more of appropriate step.
Okay, Joe?
You could tell us about an idea that you had to come to council and sell to them, you know, how did you do it, and what was your outcome?
Great, let's see. Well, several years ago, probably four years ago, I think we're in our fourth year of the city's new compensation plan. It's a pay-for-performance plan, and so previously, the city was on a step system, and we had mid-year market adjustments. Wheat Ridge got to a point in its life cycle as a city that mid-year market adjustments were not fiscally reasonable, given the market and the downturn of the market, it just wasn't realistic for us to be making half a million dollars in mid-year market adjustments every year. So with the downturn in the economy, we were really in a position to have a clean slate and look at the compensation plan. And so, my idea was to partner with Mountain State's Employers Council to look at our plan and change the methodology. And so, our prior plan was really built on looking at the maximum of the pay ranges, and then designing the ranges from the maximum. And the challenge with that is, the maximum of the ranges are often an artificial number, as I call it, and not actual pay data in terms of actual salaries that individuals are making. And so, each position has a value, and that's why you have your salary grades and overall classification system. And so, we moved toward with, I had the support from my city manager and executive management team to move forward and look at development of a new compensation system. We are also in the process of redoing our performance appraisal system, so it was really about taking these two systems and aligning them at a certain point in time. And a lot of that work came about from focusing on the development of core values and having very specific core values and a strategic mission internally for the organization. And so, we spent quite a bit of time, probably about a year, where I meet with Mountain State's Employers Council and each director, looking at where each individual staff member is placed within current pay grades. We've looked at hierarchy and had a discussion about hierarchy and how each job fits, and then looked at the pay data that Mountain State has. And the great thing about the Mountain State's Employers Council pay data is that it's not just about six or 10 comparable cities, it's the whole Denver metro area, and depending on certain jobs, you can broaden that to the northern region of Colorado or the southern region of Colorado. So there's great statistical pay data points that is beneficial in using Mountain State's Employers Council for that project. And so, we were able to come up with a pay plan that represented where the city was at several years ago. I'm proud to say that we're in our fourth year of that pay plan, and we've been very successful in working with the staff and managing the budget side of it. So we typically budget about $450,000 a year for pay-for-performance increases typically come underneath that budget amount, and we've been able to provide pay increases through the performance appraisal system, and we do increases one time a year, with the exception of some sworn officers that we capture them on their anniversary date. And so what we do is, we provide increases anywhere from 5%. Typically, the market average within our area is about 3%, so anywhere from just under 3% to 5%. And so that's really helped energize and inspire staff to work harder for those who want to work harder and be more creative and, you know, increase what they provide to the city.
So it wasn't that hard of a sell to city council?
It wasn't, thank you. City council is very supportive of it. You know, it used to be a system that got questioned a lot, and we provide an update to council about the pay-for-performance system during the budget presentation, but it's not really questioned.
Thank you. Kim?
Heather, can you tell us your experience and what type of a council manager form that you're used to? In particular, how will work with nine separate bosses who have different agendas, different goals, different perspectives?
Sure. So, the council manager form of government at the city of Wheat Ridge can, looks like this. We have two council members from four districts, so there's eight council members, and then we have a mayor that's elected at large. We also have two unique elected positions, which consist of an elected city clerk that's part-time and an elected city treasurer who's also part-time. I work closely with my city manager and the mayor on various topics. My engagement with elected officials on council really depends on what projects that I'm working on. I work very closely with the city treasurer. Jerry DeTulio was our former mayor, he's also a council member, so I've known him for the nine years that I've been at the city of Wheat Ridge, and I work closely with him on the investment side of city funds. I serve on his quarterly investment committee, that's the city manager, myself and Jerry DeTulio, in providing guidance to him on city monthly financial reports. I was thinking about this question because the management team asked me this question yesterday, and I think one of the unique positions that I'm in, given that I don't currently have eight, nine bosses, I do, I would liken it to the position being in charge of support services. So I work very closely with the five directors that we have at the city of Wheat Ridge, and they all, given their different departmental focuses, come to me on a pretty regular basis when they're in need of support from the HR perspective, the IT perspective, it could be financially focused. So, while they're not my bosses, I think that I'm very comfortable working in an environment where you have multiple stakeholders, and I think that's what's important in terms of my role here at the city of North Glen, is I know how to interact with different people who have different personality types, and I think my approach is very collaborative. And so, it's something that I look forward to and know that I can balance those priorities, and through open and direct communication, if I'm unclear about what a priority looks like, that's something that I need to communicate with you all as a whole and make sure that I have the appropriate direction.
Okay. Jordan?
Good morning.
Tell us about a time that you were in a new job, steps that you take to build the trust with your coworkers and staff.
I'll use the example of going from the assistant to the city manager in Wheat Ridge to becoming the administrative services director. So I went from being a peer with several of my coworkers to now becoming their boss back in 2010. And so, one of the first steps that I took with my leadership team, as I call them, is to sit down with each of them individually and really talk about what they need from me as their supervisor, what motivates them. I have eight direct reports, and each of them, they're very different individuals, which makes my job fun, and it can be challenging at the same time. And so, knowing what makes them tick, and knowing that I need to communicate with my HR manager differently than I communicate with my IT manager, that's something that I'm aware of, and that being flexible with those communication styles has really been helpful, and I would say I've been successful in building trust with them. I think providing consistent feedback and clear expectations were also two components of building rapport and trust with them.
Awesome, thank you. Becky?
Hi. You know, can you name three major development projects that you've worked on in negotiating and seeing all the way through to the end?
So, this is an area where I have to say that I haven't been at the table negotiating development projects, and that's one of the exciting things about this position, is I would have that opportunity to be more involved in helping move economic development projects forward. I can say that I've been on the periphery from the perspective that my role has been to help market and promote what has been happening in Wheat Ridge, the economic revitalization that we've experienced. So there's a few projects which I'm really proud to talk with you about. There's the Perrin's Road Town Home Project at 30 and Dupuy, and that's a project that was TIF-funded and supported by the Urban Renewal Authority in Wheat Ridge. My role in that project was to work with a city publicist that we hired several years ago, her name's Lou Stasco, and she has helped us have a greater presence in the metro area media. This is a strategy that we have found hugely successful because it's hard to capture the attention of the media by sending a news release, and so we've established a relationship with her, and so through Lou's help, we've been able to get greater presence in the Denver Post, as well as other publications such as 5280, which was really exciting last year to have a presence in the 5280. a presence in the 5280 magazine to talk about what's happening in Wheat Ridge. So that's one project. I was responsible for holding the groundbreaking for that project where I worked with our economic development manager, Steve R., and our city manager, Patrick Goff, to make sure that event was a well-attended and great event to celebrate that partnership between the Urban Renewal Authority and the city. Also with the Sprouts Development, as we used to call it, Kipling Ridge at 38th and Kipling. We have a Sprouts, a drive-through Starbucks, a pad that's not yet developed, as well as a Morningstar memory care facility, which is about to open in a couple of weeks. And with that site, I was also responsible for the groundbreaking, which was a great partnership with Sprouts, and promoting that development and the partnership that also included a TIF agreement as well as a million-dollar cash agreement from the city of Wheat Ridge to help spur activity there. In terms of a third site, let me think here. There currently is a site at 38th and Kipling, I mean 38th and Wadsworth, excuse me, and that site is the site of the future home of a neighborhood Walmart grocer. It's an overall mixed-use development site. And so we were on the path to better promoting that site. However, our citizens voted in November to require that TIF agreements above $2.5 million need to go to the vote of the people. So that development site is currently caught up in litigation. The developer is suing the city of Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, and so we have to let that play out before that development site moves forward. So I have been on the periphery, but I'm aware of the different economic development tools that Northland currently uses, as well as what's been used in the city of Wheat Ridge.
Can I?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, basically, from a project management status, you know, you've already agreed that you haven't had much experience in that, being directly involved. What do you think is going to be the biggest challenge for you to take on that role in our city manager role?
I think, you know, the challenge is really the opportunity to work with Brooke and Debbie and get up to speed on the status of projects and really figure out what work I need to do to help market those sites. So the marketplace, the Huron Center, I know that there's work being done there and working with multiple property owners. And so I really view my role as, you know, making sure we're maintaining good partnerships with the development community and that I'm playing an active role in supporting Debbie in the work that she does with Inura, as well as Brooke, in terms of the planning side of things and making sure things are moving forward. So while I know and acknowledge that it'll be a bit of a learning curve, it's something that I view as an opportunity and a challenge that I'm ready for. And then unfortunately, I just can't get that experience at the city of Wheat Ridge based on the way we're structured.
Okay.
Sure.
Antonio.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you describe the most culturally diverse environment you've ever worked in? And tell us about the difficulty you encountered and how you handled it.
That's a great question. Wheat Ridge, well, I did spend a summer in New York City right after my undergraduate experience at the University of Denver, where I worked for the City of New York Parks Agency. And that was a very diverse organization, just given the density within the city itself, which was a lot of fun and a challenge in getting to know individuals who were spread out amongst the different boroughs. I would say the city of Wheat Ridge is probably the foremost community that I've worked in that's very diverse. And I would say diverse from a generational perspective. The city of Wheat Ridge has one of the highest aging populations in the Denver metropolitan area, let alone the state of Colorado. And that's true for Jefferson County as a whole. So with that diversity, you get different opinions and perspectives. Wheat Ridge is undergoing a tremendous amount of change, and change is difficult for individuals. We've had an influx of younger families who may not be able to afford to live in the Highlands area. They want to be close to the core of downtown Denver, but they want that feel of having large homes with big trees and that sort of thing. So I think from that perspective, it's been a great learning experience. I would say within the organization, over the past three years in particular, I would say we've been able to attract new talent to the organization, diverse talent. I think as we've repositioned ourselves as being open for business, I think that we are naturally seeing individuals of different backgrounds who want to work for the city of Wheat Ridge. And with that, you get unique skill sets and a better sense of Wheat Ridge being culturally diverse. You know, we're predominantly Caucasian community, and then, you know, one of our higher populations is the Hispanic community. And our police department has done great work in terms of engaging our Hispanic population. There's certainly more work that we could do on that front.
Mercy.
So tell us about a time when you were overwhelmed with your tasks but still had to make yourself available to staff. How did you do it?
I find myself in that position every budget cycle. Because we're lean on the finance front, it's a balancing act. In some years, I do it better than other years. So I have a sign that I put on my door when I need to close my door during the budget preparation cycle. The first year that I became director, I would say was a year that I didn't do this so well. And my boss gave me some great feedback that you just need to close your door. And so I put a nice sign on my door that I use periodically where it's like I'm in crunch time, you know, working on budget. If you really need me, knock. So my direct reports know that they can knock on the door if it's an urgent matter. So one of the things that's important to me is that during budget time, I don't really disrupt their schedules. And so I meet with my direct reports on a bi-weekly or weekly basis. And so I try to hold those meetings, and sometimes I do have to juggle them, which can be frustrating for me, but it's just a reality with the position that I'm in. And, you know, it's an evolution that occurs in terms of developing the process, for lack of a better way to say it. And so even though I could plan that my Friday is going to look like three hours of working on budget in the morning, I could have a personnel situation arise that requires my support and conversations with the HR manager that I've got to put the budget aside and focus on the HR priority on that given day.
Okay. Back to me. Counsel is very interested in having a strong communication, especially on projects that we're working on. And how would you communicate project changes and progress to not only the council but to the appropriate people? And, you know, how have you done that in the past?
Sure. Having a strong communications infrastructure is really important to me. I think I put this in my questionnaire, semifinalist questionnaire. I view communication infrastructure as just as important as road and street infrastructure. I think that there's a lot of different ways you can communicate with the community, given social media and all the tools that we have at our disposal. So I also know, coming from the communications background that I have, is you can't rely on one sole source of communicating with individuals, whether it be city council, whether it be staff, or the community. So I think making sure that as you're focusing on managing a project, you have discussions about what communication looks like. And so I think that's a natural part of project management for me because of my background in communications. And so if we're, for example, talking about, say, what's happening at the marketplace, you know, I need to be thinking about, okay, what information does the city council know? And is that appropriate to send in an email? Is it more appropriate to have discussion in a meeting? It could be both. You know, I don't like to operate under surprises, and I think I have that same approach with working with all of you. And so what do I need to do to make sure the flow of communication is there? In terms of communicating with staff, you know, if you don't push information out throughout the organization, sometimes a different story could get told, and factual information can get misrepresented. So part of the sub-strategies that I have in my first-year game plan really includes regular and consistent communication with the staff via email. I think utilizing the Connections newsletter on a regular basis and making sure that relevant up-to-date information's being pushed out that way. Looking at possibly having some type of electronic communication, which I know the newsletter's sent out electronically, but maybe doing something a little bit differently there can help with that flow of communication. So I know I'm being somewhat general, but it's really about utilizing multiple communication channels from my perspective, and that's just a natural part of project management. So if I'm not directly involved in a project, say it's a street project within Public Works, it's about me asking David about what are we doing to make sure the community is informed? Does it require a letter of notice to adjacent citizens? Are we pushing the information out via Facebook? Is there a news flash on the website? So that consistent flow of communication is really important to me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Based upon what you've learned about our plan to this point, what do you see as your biggest challenge to accepting the position, and how would you handle it?
I think my biggest challenge in accepting this position is, again, rolling up my sleeves, sitting down with David and Brooke, Debbie, and wrapping my arms around the economic development priorities that exist alongside, and I think kind of goes hand-in-hand with what I have laid out in my first-year game plan in terms of prioritization. So I think that really identifying where I fit within those projects and making sure that I'm not being disruptive to the progress that has already been made, and then it's really very forward-looking, and I'm supporting staff in the work that's been done and moving things forward. And knowing where I need to push, when I need to push, and knowing where I need to check in with council when that's appropriate, I think, when it be a challenge, it would naturally come about with being active in those economic development projects. And again, I know it'll be a challenge, but I view it as an exciting opportunity.
Kayla.
Perfect, thank you. I know that you addressed some of your ideas for Northland in your first-year game plan. With that being said, how do you plan on getting your leadership team to buy into your vision on how you want the city to be ran? And how would you deal with resistance that's there?
Well, part of my perspective in the first-year game plan is talking with the staff leadership team and it not being about my plan. I really, in terms of action step two, sitting down with them and involving them in identification of what else is out there within the organization that needs to be a priority, I want it to be our plan. And I think that's where I'm giving them a seat at the table and making sure that they're active members of developing what the first year looks like. I think that's where I can inspire and empower them in that, in the end, I put forth ultimately as the city manager, a great game plan in working with all of you. So I don't view it as it's a Heather plan, it's a city manager's plan. It's really working hand-in-hand and collaboratively with the staff leadership team.
Joe.
So tell us about a time when you were not able to remain calm under pressure. What happened? What'd you do about it?
That's a great question. I think I'm a pretty patient person, and I think of a situation where I was dealing with some miscommunication with a couple of my direct reports supervisors. And there was a situation where, I think, given the workload that I had at the time, I wasn't able to provide enough regular one-on-one attention and communication with them. And so I think that in the end, you know, it really was a way for me to reflect that I needed to, you know, build in time so that they'd have face time with me. It was a situation where there was a disagreement about the customer service that my front-desk receptionist was providing, and one of my supervisors thought it was lacking. And that translated into some triangulation and gossip within my department, which was really unhealthy. And it came out in the annual staff retreat that I have with my leadership team within the department. So, you know, that particular situation, I got really offended, and probably it wasn't my finest moments in terms of getting more emotional than I normally would. And it wasn't about yelling or anything like that, it was just feeling hurt. And so it took a couple of days, you know, called a timeout, let's take a couple of days to cool off, and then came back to each of those team members and had one-on-one discussions with them, apologized for not being completely composed, and really focused on how we needed to move forward.
Heather, if you can see where having this tape taken for our residents, our residents don't have all the information that we have. So can you share with us why you're the most qualified candidate for this position and your work with each of the different representatives that we have in our city?
Sure. I think I'm the most qualified candidate to be your next city manager because of how I've come up through the ranks in the local government profession. I started out as an intern at the city of Greenwood Village and then stayed with Greenwood Village and worked for five years in Parks and Recreation as a management assistant to the director of Parks and Recreation. So I got great experience working hands-on with park playground projects, rim cutting, trail easements, open space acquisition. And then that later translated into an interim opportunity with the city manager's office where I oversaw the community outreach division. And then I later came to the city of Wheat Ridge in 2006, where I served as the assistant to the city manager. In that role, I had the opportunity to work on a variety of special projects, as well as help build the communications program at Wheat Ridge. Some of the things I'm most proud of is having the opportunity to work with city council members from a legislative side, going to National League of Cities with council members and making sure that they have the information that they need to be effective and to, you know, ask for what our city needs at a federal level, as well as really promoting what has happened in Wheat Ridge. One of the things I'm really proud about that I think it's important for the community to know is it's important for us to tell our story and to brag about the great things that we're doing in the city. And so applying for awards through Dr. Cog, through 3CMA. Sometimes as staff members, we have a tendency to diminish the value of our contributions. And so I think really working with directors, which I've done, to make sure we're applying for awards when it's appropriate and to brag about what we've done, whether it's an Article in 5280 magazine, or it's, you know, what could seem more simple, which is getting the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award on an annual basis. I think that's really important. The work that I've done as administrative services director is really a strong generalist position, and I've worked with a variety of stakeholders, and I've brought about great strategic change in the city of Wheat Ridge. And so change management from the performance appraisal system process to the compensation process, and just the work that I've done in building a strong team within my department, I think helps reflect that I'm a well-qualified candidate for this position.
Okay. Jordan.
Some people prefer to solve problems alone while others prefer to work in a group. Tell us about a problem you had to solve alone, but which had direct impact on others. How did you do it?
Well, this is an example that I shared with the management team yesterday. And in terms of the decision-making aspect of it, it was my problem to solve. But from the perspective that there's an But, from the perspective that there's an impact to multiple stakeholders, that's where my approach is to engage and get feedback and input and buy-in from multiple stakeholders involved in this situation. So, we have what we call an HR Business Partner structure for our Human Resources Division. So, we helped bring about this change a couple of years ago, where we went from the traditional hierarchy of senior analyst, HR analyst, HR manager, to having the HR manager and plus two HR Business Partners. So, unfortunately, a few weeks ago, I was contacted by our Parks and Recreation Director, and she presented to me several challenges that they've been having with their existing HR Business Partner. And it ranges from communication to lack of follow-through, confusion about our processes from an FMLA perspective, from a recruitment perspective. And so, I was really surprised by these issues and challenges. I wasn't aware that this had been happening. And so, through our discussion, I delegated it to my, well, to the Parks and Recreation Director and my HR Manager to really sit down and dive in to those issues and figure out what's going on and what we could do. And at that time, I had asked her if she wanted to switch HR Business Partners, but at that point in time, it wasn't something that we wanted to move forward with. Well, from that point, my HR Manager and the Parks Director sat down, and after their conversation, it became apparent to me that there were greater issues at play. And so, that raised the level of urgency for me to really sit down with my HR Manager and talk through what was going on. And so, as I learned more about the situation, it became apparent to me that, within my control, what I could control is shifting the HR Business Partners, so swapping the current setup. The HR Business Partner that's involved has the highest number of FTEs in the organization. They support the Police Department, as well as the Parks and Recreation Department. So, you're talking in the ballpark of about 175 FTEs. The other HR Business Partner has fewer FTEs by about 100. And so, there's the disproportionate workload. And so, given the lack of satisfaction on the Park and Recreation side of things, we've set into motion, with the buy-in from my HR Manager, to go ahead and move the one HR Business Partner and shift the departmental responsibility. So, it's more of an equalized workload, it's not completely apples-to-apples in terms of numbers, but it's, we're hoping that it balances out a little bit more. And then, that'll provide us the opportunity to make sure that we work with the HR Business Partner and make sure that there's clarity in terms of what processes look like. And so, we're going to be making some effort to really draw out workflow processes, who's responsible, set expectations, who's responsible for what. Parks and Rec needs to do this in the recruitment process. HR's responsible for these steps.
You know, when I talk about your passion, what do you find so exciting, and where is your passion, what do you see is your passion laying in with the city of Northland?
Well, I'll give you a little bit of background. When I was in undergrad, I had always dreamed about going to law school and working on Capitol Hill. And so, I was fortunate to have a semester, a summer semester, to study at Georgetown through this program called the English Chef Institute, where I got to take a couple courses at Georgetown and then work on Capitol Hill for representative, former representative Dan Schaefer. And when I got out there, it was a lot different than I thought. And so, working in a congressman's office and taking calls on big tobacco and those types of issues, I struggled with being able to wrap my arms around it and really have, feel that I was making a difference in a community. And so, my senior year at DU, I was able to do an internship with Greenwood Village and discover the role of a city manager, and that's where my passion for city management really came about. And so, 16 years later, here I am with this opportunity to work for the city of Northland. And my passion for Northland stems from the fact that I see so much opportunity and potential here, and I've lived and breathed it in the city of Wheat Ridge. And then, I know that my skillset that I have and the challenges that I've been through previously in my career, I know that with my work ethic and my approach to problem-solving, that I can be of benefit here. You have such an amazing staff. And in talking with all of you, you're very passionate about the community, and I think that passion is synergetic, and it's something that's grown through this recruitment process. And so, I think that it's a great match for me to be your next city manager, and I think I'm really excited about what I have to offer the community. And as I've told the management team yesterday, I'm a local government nerd. I love to learn about cities when I take trips. I intentionally seek out different things that I've read about, you know, if it's in Portland, or Seattle, or Chicago, or New York, you know, reading newspaper articles and different publications about how cities are using best practices and paving the way to better represent their citizenry, that inspires me. And I think there's opportunity to better tell the story of what's happening in Northland, and that's exciting.
How would you persuade city council to go along with you on an issue that's hard to sell?
Number one, I'll do my homework and make sure that I know what I need to know to make sure that you have all the information that you need to make an informed decision. And there needs to be a comfort level. I'm not going to come before you and recommend that you move in a direction that I'm not comfortable with. And I know that there's going to be times where we agree to disagree, and I think that's appropriate. But, first and foremost, I'm never going to put you in a position where you don't have all the information that you need to make informed decisions. So, I think with that, you know, it's a matter of working with my staff leadership team, and I will communicate to you, probably through my passion, how I feel and think about a particular, whether it's a development project or more of an operational issue.
Tell us about the most difficult citizen encounter you have experienced. How did you handle it?
Well, just about a week ago, I was walking to a meeting, and my sales tax supervisor stopped me and asked me for help in talking with a gentleman who had come in who wanted to get a temporary license to sell Super Bowl gear. And we don't, that's something that we don't allow in the city of Wheat Ridge. And so, he had already been out on-site at a location at 30th and Wadsworth, and so, one of our police officers went out and contacted him and said he needed to come into the city and get a temporary license. Well, unfortunately, that was miscommunicated to him. And so, the individual wasn't angry, he just didn't understand why we didn't offer the temporary opportunity like several other cities in the metro area offered. So, I apologized that he was given misinformation, and, you know, he was really insistent about the fact that we're missing the opportunity. And, you know, I just had to reiterate to him that, you know, that wasn't part of what was allowed under our code, and that it's something that, you know, I'll keep in mind moving forward, that, you know, if there's an interest at the council level to maybe change that regulation at a certain point in time, you know, if I see an increased demand in that, that's something that I would talk with my direct supervisor, the city manager, about and look at adding that to what we provide from a business licensing perspective. But, at this point in time, it hasn't been, there hasn't been a demand for that. So, you know, just being very compassionate and empathetic with the position that he's in and communicating to him that, you know, we're sorry about the miscommunication, but that we couldn't allow him to continue selling Super Bowl gear.
Well, unfortunately, our time is almost gone. So, I'm wondering, is there anything you would like to ask us?
I would like to know just more about the timeline in terms of moving forward with the selection process.
Well, after this meeting with all of the folks that are interviewing, then we will have another meeting with council and staff, and then, then again, alone with staff to have a discussion, or with council to have a discussion. So, we're not sure, you know, probably, you know, the timeline, I'm not quite, couldn't give you a week or two week if that's what you're looking for, but as soon as possible, you know.
Sounds good.
Don't want you concerned or lingering, you know, so, yeah. But, we'll get back with you as soon as possible. It'll either be Ron or our city attorney.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for the opportunity to interview with you. I'm really excited about this possibility of becoming your next city manager, and I think I'm a great candidate and the best candidate for the job. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
And being our first interview.
Right.
It's a pleasure meeting you, Heather.
Nice to meet you.
So, I just want to welcome you, Jim, and thank you for coming this morning.
Well, thank you. Again, my name is Jim Hayes. I want to thank you all for allowing me to compete for this position. I know it's very important for the city, as well as a lot of things you're trying to accomplish here. I've got a quick slide presentation. It's really a supplement to the written materials that were provided to you earlier in the week. So, I'm going to go through it relatively quickly because I've probably got 15 or 16 slides, and I won't have, obviously, 10 minutes will be pretty short to spend on those number of slides. I've broken this plan down into four main areas by time, first 30 days, first 60 to 90 days, first six months, and then the first year. I've got subject matter areas that kind of cross over all of those categories or time periods, which includes meetings, research and information gathering, looking at the major projects, city manager reports, a city council retreat, which I think will be very important, community outreach, the budget, an annual work plan, and organizational development. There are several communities in the region that can provide an example that we can look at. I've got some experience, of course, in Commerce City, looking at these types of things. And while it's important to maintain focus on short-term projects, long-term projects, it's also important to handle the day-to-day things that come up to all of you from the citizens and the businesses in the community. So, real quick, I'm going to run through the first 30 days. I think it's important to consult with each of you individually, as well as the leadership team. And also, we're going to have to have a series of study sessions to talk about some of these issues. I also think it's important to talk at all levels of the organization. So, having a leadership team discussion with each of those members individually, and then furthering down into other levels of the organization. The other thing is, as a city manager, there's a lot of regional meetings I would need to attend, so I'm going to get those on the calendar and start getting out and talking to some of my colleagues at some of those meetings. Research and information gathering, I think it's really important that, again, getting a lot of updates from all of you on the various projects. I've got several areas of research I've identified here in the first 30 days that I'd be looking at, especially in terms of the major projects. Again, a quick view of those projects is going to be very important in the first few weeks, looking at the schedules, the budgets, understanding where we've got some areas of improvement, where we can get some things moving a little quicker. Also, I've got a lot of detailed comments in the plan about my experience and how I think I can jump in very quickly in a lot of those projects. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about that here. The other thing I want to talk about is the city manager reports. I know David has a Friday report he gets out to all of you. One of the great things we've done in Commerce City is that we take a monthly, excuse me, a weekly report, and we actually provide that in the council meeting. We actually verbally go over some of the things, and we take your input throughout the week, whether it be an email, a voicemail, a phone call, a face-to-face interaction with me, or if you've got some citizen issue that's come up to you that you want to be able to report back publicly. I think it's very important to have that transparency, that you're addressing issues that are coming across your desk on a daily and weekly basis. Dividing into the first 60 to 90 days, again, I've identified two additional levels of meetings I think that are important. These are in no particular order. But, once I've spent some time with the leadership team, I think it's important to get down to that next level of division managers and try to identify issues that are going on in those departments, operational things that they're managing right now, and really, so those folks have a chance to interact with me personally, so that we can start to build that relationship at that level. The other thing I think that's very important is an all-hands meeting with the employees, something that I would like to do very quickly, try to articulate my philosophy to the staff, again, give them a chance to interact with me personally. I think those would be a regular occurrence, gives you an opportunity to kind of lay out some strategic objectives that are trying to be accomplished in the organization, and again, to keep the communication open with all of the staff. So, I want to take a quick break from the plan, just talk about management philosophy. This is a pretty simple diagram I like to use. Again, leadership, management, and tasks. This is kind of what everyone's day is made up of, right? Well, the city manager may have a pretty large slice of this pie that's leadership, maybe a pretty small slice that is a task, okay? So, it's not going to be equal one-thirds necessarily for every employee. The department directors might be in a similar situation, they have a pretty large leadership slice, maybe a pretty large management slice. But, I think it's important to note that everyone in the organization has an opportunity to exhibit leadership on a day-to-day basis, from the streets worker, the animal control officer, the police officer. They have a lot of opportunities where they can give feedback to their supervisors about the best way of doing business in the community, providing a lot of input that way. I like to use the example of a Detroit factory worker who was told his supervisor, "You know, you paid me for my hands, but you could have had my mind for free every day." And that person had a lot of input in how they did things, and it's really important to get that feedback from everybody. So, again, I think everyone has a little bit of a leadership slice, no matter what level they are on the team. So, continuing with the first 90 days or so, again, I think it's important to follow up on the retreat that you had last week. I think it'd be important for us to have another retreat pretty quickly, again, so I can get to know all of you a little bit better, the leadership team can roll up their sleeves, and we can start making some progress in all these products we have on the list. The other thing I think it's important, I've identified a few main goals that could be accomplished. These could be, you know, modified based on your preference, but I'd like to take a look at the vision, the mission, the values of the organization, maybe refresh those, get those more ingrained with everybody so they start living those. And again, a large portion of that retreat would be spent focusing on some of your council goals, maybe three to five main ideas that you're trying to accomplish. And then, we can expand those into looking at more detailed objectives and some specific targets that we're trying to accomplish together. The other thing with respect to community outreach, I think it's very important to have the city manager out in the community. I want to be looking at the boards and commissions, making sure we've got the appropriate level of staff support. But also, every event, every community organization, I want to get out and meet everybody, understand that there's a lot of people that I have a lot of involvement. We've got great volunteers here that want to interact with the city, and they want to know who I am. So, I think that's important, definitely in the first couple of months. First six months, again, this is kind of a, it goes over the whole period, so it's not something I'd be waiting, you know, 90 days to start. So, I say May to November in that time period. It's a 2017 work plan. Obviously, got a lot of things on our plate right now for 2016, but I think it's really important as we start getting into the budget process, which will start sooner rather than later, we're going to want to start looking at the 2017 plan. Again, it's going to be an iterative process as ideas are developed, and the budgets develop, and then the budget gets more refined, the work plan is going to have another iteration to it as well. And then, in order to improve maybe transparency, what I like to do is do a quarterly report to the city council. Maybe we could start that as soon as the end of the year, but definitely for 2017, as we report on that work plan, I think it's important for the public to see how we're accomplishing those things, looking at the objectives. accomplishing those things, looking at the objectives, the targets, maybe actually having some data to go back and outline exactly what we're doing on a day-to-day basis with the taxpayers' money. This is just a quick graphic I threw together. This is, I've modified this for Northland. We've used this for the last couple of years in Commerce City. That would just start over here on the left with the summer 2016. Again, we're already in the 2016 budget, we've got a work plan that we're going to be executing, but it's really important to start looking ahead for the next year. And so as we start to develop the 2017 plan, align that with the budget, you move into the fall, start to finalize that work plan, finalize the budget, and then it gets adopted as you get close to the winter period. And then in the spring, you'd have another winter retreat potentially, maybe January, February time period, and you start to kick off the 2018 plan. It's really a good way to get on a good cycle, so you're always looking maybe one year out to try to get these things accomplished. You can start to fill in a lot of the details on that work plan, again, with specific time periods of when things are going to be accomplished. You can start building even a council work calendar for when you're going to have study sessions and take formal action on a lot of projects that you've got on the list. I'm not going to go over this for the essence of time, but any good work plan is going to have SMART goals in it. You've got to have measurable goals, they have to be very specific, time-bound, again, holding ourselves accountable for the things on that work plan and making sure that we're accomplishing things. Now, with any work plan, we're going to have new things that are going to pop up, so we can't get so rigid that we've got to do every single thing in exact that fashion, but that's where your feedback is going to be important along with the staff to make sure we can be flexible and address new challenges or opportunities that come across the city's So continuing with the first six months, again, I think the first three points on this slide relate to general financial operations of the city. I think this would also include not just the finance department, but every department as it relates to contracting and procurement. Again, in Commerce City, we found that we needed to update those policies. We were doing a lot of capital projects, wanted to make sure that we were fair and equitable in our procurement processes, that we had standardized contracts that were very simple to understand, and so that when it comes in front of you, you're not looking at new language every time, you know, just little nuances maybe with each project. Also, when we get into the budget, I think there's maybe an opportunity to have a budget retreat. I think it's important to have those city council or department presentations to the city council in advance, identifying maybe what was requested versus what the city manager is recommending, so that you understand what was prioritized, you've got an opportunity to give us feedback, maybe we have things that we cut that you didn't want to cut and want to put those back in, then we can have a more detailed discussion at a retreat, and then give the finance department a couple months after that to still get it done in accordance with your requirements. Again, major projects, I'm not going to go through a detailed explanation of all of those right here, there's so many on the plate right now that would probably take another half an hour or so, but I do want to point out, you know, I think the written report shows I've got a lot of special skills, knowledge, experience in virtually all of those areas that you're looking at. I know the geography of the city, I know the leadership team, I think we can be able to hit the ground running pretty quickly with a lot of those projects. I want to show this graphic, this is not in the report, but, and I know it's probably not easy to read here, that's why I've handed it out to you. The whole point is to show the concept. This is a widely accepted concept for all project management, phases and gates. And it starts from pre-planning, design, construction, acceptance and closeout, kind of left to right. Usually, it's based on capital projects, where you're going to be actually going through a design and construction process, but I don't see why we couldn't translate this to a lot of the other projects, like a comprehensive plan, or a sign code update, or something like that. The key with this is to put a schedule with it, put a budget with it, and then every time you complete all those things in the box, you get to move through the gate to the next phase. And it's a very clear checklist for everybody to understand, here's what we've got to get accomplished with this project and within this time period. It really starts to put a finer grain on every project that we've got that we're looking at right now. So next to the last slide, I've got kind of this first gear, and I think this is an ongoing effort really, responsible for organizational development. I've got a variety of ideas there. Essentially, I think that all organizations should be undergoing continuous improvement. So there's opportunities for training, professional development, that should be a high priority in the organization. I would like to take a look at the organizational structure, make sure that we're staffed appropriately, not to say that we need to reduce positions, but maybe you can have a little more efficiencies built into the positions that we have. Also, would help myself and the finance department understand when departments come to the city manager and ask for new positions, let's understand what we're doing on a day-to-day basis to see if that's really warranted. I also like the idea of quarterly leadership retreats. So the leadership team would get together on a quarterly basis, and we would work on some of these big issues together. Again, in Commerce City, what we've done over the last few years is we've expanded some of those leadership retreats to include the next level of division managers. So we'll get about 30 people in the room, again, talking about maybe a DISC analysis or a crucial conversations training, or project management. Maybe it's used as a training opportunity as well as a half-day or full-day retreat. So in conclusion, I'd say I put this together based on my research, the interviews I conducted with some of you and the leadership team. I think there's extensive discussion and additional direction that would be needed from all of you to prioritize the elements of this plan, modify it probably in the first 30 days when I came on board. And, but overall, I still believe my experience here in Northland prior as the planning director, and the experience I've got in Commerce City as the deputy city manager, really provide me an opportunity to execute a plan like this faster than any other candidate we're talking to. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does council have any questions at this point concerning the plan? None?
Not me, no.
None, 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 all right. Okay, well, I'll start out with the first question.
Okay.
Okay, just wondering, is there anything else you would like us to know about you or your plan or anything?
I would say one thing, I think I told some of you this last night, you know, when I left in 2011, I felt like the city was just kind of in a reactive mode. We were kind of waiting for some things to happen. And, you know, part of it was I was maybe impatient, aggressive, you know, I wanted to get things done, and part of it was the economy. It was pretty tough in 2011, we were still coming out of the recession. But I just want to reiterate that, you know, I really think Northland is moving in the right direction, very, very proactive. The amazing things you've done with urban renewal, you know, I've been watching, I'm just across the river, you know, I see some of you at regional meetings. I just think it's such a proactive situation now that it's something I really want to be a part of. The other thing I would point out too is that I'm not dissatisfied in Commerce City, it's a great place, there's a lot going on there too, and have a great relationship with the city council, the mayor, the city manager, but I feel like I can add a lot more to an organization than I am now. I'm doing a lot there, doing the budget, the work plan, the capital projects, kind of the COO of the organization, but I'd really like to blend it in and be the CEO and the COO of an organization.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Carol?
Okay, so at your current position in Commerce City, can you give us an example of a time when you had to reduce expenses? How did you determine where to cut costs and the impact?
Okay. Let's see, I would say it was probably the capital improvement program. We have a long-range financial plan over there that has a $1 billion worth of projects on it, and it's a 40-year plan. We clearly do not have that kind of money to implement those projects. So what we've done every year is we've done a capital improvement plan just for that year, and it's found to be not very effective because we sometimes spend money on projects that are maybe smaller projects, higher priority, but then we're losing the larger projects kind of in the wash, and there might be something we want to save up for. So one of the things that we tried to do is we tried to articulate a full five-year plan and lay out a bunch of projects for city council to understand. Here's the sources, here are the uses of funds, and what do you really want to accomplish here? So we had some real hard policy discussions about, yeah, there were some short-term needs, but we really needed to balance that with some of the long-term growth that we were trying to achieve in some of the bigger projects. And so we made recommendations about actually cutting back on some of those short-term projects, still handling operations and maintenance on an annual basis, but me cutting back so we could do some of the larger projects. And so that'd be the best example I can think of.
Okay. Okay.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning.
There was a story on NPR yesterday that according to the National Association of Realtors, millennials now make up the largest segment of homebuyers in the nation. What innovative ideas do you have to ensure that Northland stays on the cutting edge of this new marketplace?
That's a great question. I was actually talking with some of the staff yesterday about this. I think Northland is uniquely positioned to really be a sustainable community, and I think that's what a lot of millennials are looking for. They're looking for something where they've got recreational opportunities close by, they've got retail they can walk to in their neighborhood, solid schools for ultimately when they want to become, you know, have a family, and housing value. So I think if you combine those things together and you look at Northland right now, we're in pretty good shape, you know, we're close to downtown, and people want to get downtown to work, and have transit available. But it's really interesting, when you look at the retail and the neighborhoods, they're very close and they're integrated with each other, and you can walk to those places now, especially with the new Walmart down here and what we've got across the street. So I think it's those kind of things, you kind of have to look at, you know, the built environment to make sure that you've got some good access and solid neighborhoods, have good community events, so that people can have that social interaction and stay in their community on the weekends than having to go somewhere else for that type of thing. And then again, have the economic base there that's going to be able to support those housing units.
Jim?
Describe the time when you had to sell an idea to city council, how did you do that, and what was the outcome of it?
Okay. Well, let's see, we had, we're redeveloping the Mahla Greyhound Park right now, it's an urban renewal project, and about 65 acres, about 60th and Holly Street, just to give you some orientation, near Highway 85. And we were able to get a Boys and Girls Club going there, and the east half of the project looked like the market would support multifamily residential. There's a lot of single-family residential around there, and we knew that the council would be getting some pressure from the neighborhood to put in single-family residential. The challenge was that we also wanted to get some retail in there, and we needed a lot more rooftops on that property in order to support the retail. So the project looked like it was going to need 500 to 600 multifamily units on about 30 acres, and some of those were going to be considered low-income housing units or affordable units. They might have a tax credit deal associated with their housing authority, but more than likely, they would just be market rate, which in that area of Commerce City is affordable. And so we got a developer on board, he had a housing partner, a company called the Michaels Organization out of Chicago. And they came in and they presented the architecture, council really liked that, but they wanted to vet that group in a lot more detail. So I'm not proposing that we have to spend this much money every time I have to prove an idea, but we took four of our council members to Chicago to tour their project, and they have done some amazing things there. They have taken down some of the worst housing projects in Chicago history, torn them down, and built beautiful two-story, three-story walk-up units, some duplex product, and really got council sold on the idea, if you will, that we could do a high-quality multifamily project in there and not negatively impact the existing neighborhood. And so when we came back and met with the rest of the city council, those council members were huge advocates for the idea and the concept.
Nice.
Kim?
So James, you can see we're taping today.
Yes.
And we have, as council, much more information than our residents do. So can you just kind of explain a little bit about why you are the best candidate, and in particular, your experience in service areas that are safe for residents?
Sure. So I started my career as a city planner, spent 10 years at Adams County, and four years here as the community development director, planning director. One of the things I think that's most important to remind everyone, especially those in the audience that may be watching this, I led the comprehensive plan effort in 2009, 2010. And we did a lot of neighborhood outreach, we had workshops in this room with our planning commission, some of you may have attended those, and we got a chance, I got a chance to get out and actually talk to a lot of residents, understand what their needs and desires were for the long-term goals for the community. So that'd be one thing, I think I've got direct experience in this community, interacting with the residents. While I was here, I, of course, managed the building division as well as code enforcement, neighborhood services, and so have a lot of experience, again, directly in our community, understanding the issues that are facing a lot of our neighborhoods right now. When I moved over to Commerce City, I had an opportunity to manage the public works department, as well as parks, recreation, and golf, and economic development, in addition to community development. So I've really expanded my knowledge in the built environment, understanding what's important to residents out in the community in terms of those park amenities, what's a good public works project, how streets are maintained, how stormwater is maintained, how we maintain our fleet and everything like that to make sure we're safe out on the roads. The other side of the organization is managed by an administrative services officer, which would be HR, IT, and finance. So those are more internal service organizations, but, so residents might not see those on a day-to-day basis, but they're equally important in terms of the budget, making sure we're keeping turnover low, making sure we're adapting the best technology. Had a chance to work with those departments, although not directly managing them, through the annual budget process. And then another leg of the organization is really our police department. We still contract out for water and sewer and fire through districts, if you will, but our police department is the other leg of the organization. I've had an opportunity to work with our police chief on some issues there. Although he reports directly to the city manager now, I've had a chance to talk with him about some of the culture change that he's been going through in his organization. We've looked at things like body cameras, excessive use of force complaints, investigations that have not gone right in the past, and doing audits to look at those investigations to make sure how we can improve the organization in the future. And so although I don't directly manage the police chief, I've had an opportunity to work with that leg of our organization as well. So again, I think all those things are very important to our community and the residents, and so I think I've got good experience with all of that.
Jordan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tell us about a time you were new to a job, what steps did you take to build a trust with your coworkers and staff?
Okay. I'll give you an example from the private sector. When I left Adams County, I went to Florida, worked for Polte Homes doing land development. I'd never lived in Florida, I had never done land development before, and I was hired as an acquisitions manager, so I was going to handle kind of the real estate acquisitions. Well, it was going crazy in 2005 down there, and they needed someone to do the land development as well. So I became a project manager, managing some superintendents that were doing land development throughout the kind of west coast of Florida. I had to quickly understand, number one, there was a huge culture difference down there, so I had to understand kind of work ethic of people I was working with. I had to build the relationships with landowners that we were working with and properties maybe we wanted to acquire. Also had to work with a lot of contractors down there that, again, had a different style of doing business than maybe I was used to here in Colorado, especially from the public sector side of the table. So the best way that I was able to kind of bridge that gap and get myself ingrained there was just to sit down and talk with people, understand what their motivations were, let them really articulate to me what they're trying to accomplish, and see if we could get some mutual goals together. So in the case of landowners, maybe they wanted to sell, they wanted to make a profit, well, so did we, so we tried to get some common ground there that made sense. With the land superintendents, you know, they wanted to be successful, a lot of them were young construction management graduates that wanted to advance in their careers, so I could teach them some things about project management that maybe they weren't aware of or didn't learn in school. And so again, trying to show them some best practices that helped build that relationship with them. show them some best practices that helped build that relationship with them. With the contractors, even some of the consulting engineers we were working with, it was really important to, again, let them know that if they did a good job with us, that there might be future work. And so that, try to motivate them, if you will, to help us achieve our goals so that we could help them in the future, too.
Thank you.
Jim, I'm really curious on three major development projects that you may have held in any of your positions that you may have ran, and the negotiation processes that you went through. And I want to know how you saw them through to the end?
Okay.
And what your processes were to get there?
Okay. Three.
Okay, I'll go for one.
I can give you, I can come up with three.
Okay.
The first one I'll say was back when I was with Adams County, I was the planning manager. And it was the Todd Creek project, which is actually now part of the city of Thornton. That project started out in the early 90s as a residential estate-type development, well-inseptic, two-and-a-half-acre ranchette type of stuff. Cut my teeth very early in land development there, not, you know, building things, but understanding the entitlement process, helping people through that, managing school district issues, water demands, good, you know, land use planning, protection of open space along the Riverdale bluffs and so forth. That project transitioned very quickly into what we know as Heritage at Todd Creek, which was actually processed through the county. And we were doing the golf course design up there. We were working with Lenar Homes. We took it all the way through the PUD process. And then they said, "Thank you very much. We're going to go annex to the city of Thornton." So again, though, that the project really transitioned, that was probably over a period of six to eight years that that transitioned. But that's one project I'm still very, very proud of because I think it's a pretty neat project in north part of Adams County. Here in Northland, I would say, the comprehensive plan I'm very proud of. We had a collection of neighborhood plans when I arrived here in 2007. And that constituted our comprehensive plan. And they were basically a map with a four- or five-page resolution adopted by council with maybe some goals in it. That was the comprehensive plan. We had maybe down to 10 or 12 of those. And worked very closely with our staff to pull together a concept, to do workshops, to get out into the community. And we used a bit of the Denver model, saying areas of stability, areas of change. The areas of stability were really the residential neighborhoods. When you make a residential land use decision, it's essentially a permanent decision. You're not going to go in and scrape a whole bunch of houses to do a new project necessarily. And so we identified that very clearly. And because it was 2009, 2010, the budget was really tight at that point. And I'd heard some communities spending $300,000, $400,000 on consultants to do these plans. We did that in-house with our staff. I think we spent maybe less than $10,000 on that. And that was to buy cookies for the meetings and make the boards and things like that. So again, it was a really valuable project that needed to be done in the community to bring things together. And when development isn't happening at a really good pace, that's the time to do good planning. And I'm real proud of the things we did there. The third one, I knew I'd have three, was the, is the Greyhound Park project that we're undergoing right now. We purchased that property, I should say, the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority purchased that property three weeks after I arrived in Commerce City in 2011. And the city really didn't know what it wanted to do with that project. It just knew that the market wasn't responding and we needed to do something. And so we did a very methodical approach where we participated in the Niop Real Estate Challenge in 2012 with the CU and DU real estate students, which got us some, definitely statewide, maybe even some national recognition for the project, which culminated in a design competition, if you will, in early 2012. We also received an Economic Development Administration grant to do a market feasibility study for the project, which really helped us tee up our RFP that we were going to have put together for the development community when we ultimately went out for bid on that. We had a whole bunch of neighborhood outreach in late 2012 and into 2013. And all the while, we were working with the Boys and Girls Club to plan their facility to be the anchor for the corner of the project. So it's had some fits and starts, but as you know, with urban renewal products, they take longer than anyone likes sometimes. And so we are happy to say there's a Boys and Girls Club that has opened. There's well over 200 kids that are using that in our community every day. It's fully funded through Suncor and fundraising, and we provide a matching grant. And so we're doing some ongoing financing or ongoing O and M for them. And we are, I would say, this close to signing a development agreement with our master developer, which is Rick Wells of Regen LLC. Most famously, they're doing 61st and Panya out by the airport right now, that same developer. I say we're this close because we had it scheduled for our city council on February 1st, and it was continued for a couple of weeks until March 14th. So once we get that inked, we're going to have our urban renewal plan ready to go in the summer. We're going to have zoning ready to go in the summer. And although it's five years after we bought the property, we're going to be going horizontal development later this year and vertical as early as next spring.
Antonio?
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning.
Would you describe the most culturally diverse environment you've ever worked in? Tell us about one difficulty you encountered and how you handled it.
Okay. Well, that's probably Commerce City. Our core area has about 66% Hispanic, and that's where the Greyhound Park project is. And we want to make sure we did adequate neighborhood outreach to get a lot of feedback from everyone in the community. One of the challenges we had is that we would have neighborhood meetings. We had a series of six or seven of them, and no one from that element of our community would come to those meetings. So we had to adapt, and we had to figure out how we could get that feedback. And we went out to the faith-based community and actually went to the churches on the weekends and went to people where they were gathering to get their feedback. We included a lot of bilingual translations so that we could get that feedback. And it was just a way that we had to adapt to the community and how they wanted to provide the feedback to us. So that's really the best example I can give.
Okay, just a little follow-up.
Sure.
Having that adaptation, what did you learn about why they wouldn't come to you and you had to go to them?
Well, I think some folks didn't maybe trust us. They didn't feel comfortable. They didn't want to go to maybe a public civic building for some public meeting about something. But once we got into the discussion, we found that they really did care and they really did want to know about it. They just had other priorities in their life, whether it be they were just busy raising their families and working, or they truly didn't trust coming to a meeting on our turf, if you will.
Tell us about a time when you were overwhelmed with your tasks but still had to make yourself available to staff. How did you do it?
That's a constant challenge. Let's see. I would say probably during our budget process is when it gets the most challenging. I think the thing I try to do is still maintain a schedule of one-on-one meetings with my direct reports, which right now I have four: the economic development director, community development director, parks, recreation, golf, and public works director. When we get into the budget process, it is a roll-up-your-sleeves. We are knee-deep in spreadsheets. The finance department, of course, is taking the lead on a lot of the heavy lifting and making sure the math works. But, you know, I'm looking at requests from all the departments. So we're trying to balance what the revenue projections are. We're looking at the capital improvement program. We're trying to get the work plan together, as I described. And the key to maintain my accessibility is to keep those one-on-one meetings on my calendar because it's very easy to just schedule over things or cancel them. And I know if I just block out those four hours at least during those hectic weeks, I'm going to be able to maintain my commitment to the people that are counting on me. But frankly, it's weekends and nights, too. You have to spend the time to get the job done. I've learned in the public sector, it's not a 40-hour-a-week job, especially as you rise up in leadership. It is whatever it takes to get the job done. So nights and weekends, sometimes sitting over the computer and, you know, and interacting with council members sometimes on the telephone. You know, that's not a nine-to-five type of thing.
Jim, how do you communicate project changes and progress to the projects, to the broker people? And what procedures can you, do you establish to do this?
Okay. Well, I think it starts with setting the expectations upfront about the project, the schedule and the budget. I was explaining this to David yesterday, actually. We like to use this kind of inverted funnel or inverted pyramid, if you will, kind of, and if you will, that you are here, you know, as you move down the pyramid. You show that upfront so you can really say, okay, what, where are we trying to get to? Where's the endgame at the bottom of that pyramid? What's the date? What's the budget we're trying to accomplish? Inevitably, with any project, there is things that come up. I've heard the expression, you know, man makes a plan and God laughs at it, right? So I think the idea would be that you actually need to explain the reasons why there might be a change in the program or in the project, get the appropriate level of feedback, and then see if you can make up time somewhere else in the schedule without necessarily compromising the budget. In some cases, time is more important than money. And so there may be an opportunity to put more resources towards a project to get it done faster. I'd give the example of our water park that we opened last summer. We were trying to get that open in early June. And if you recall what it was like here last spring, we had snow, like, it seemed every day we had snow. And so we got the contractor committed to getting out there Saturdays, Sundays, getting it done. And we got it open a little after 4th of July, so at least got a half a season out of it. But it was very stressful because we knew the community was waiting for it and the council was waiting for it. But we just had to communicate, this is what happened, and we're going to try to keep it moving forward as best we can.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
Knowing that you know about Northland so far, learning the new things that have happened here, what do you see as your greatest challenge to accepting your position and how would you handle it?
Hmm. You know, I guess, and I mentioned this to some of you last night, too, you know, I came to grips with applying for the job a few months ago. And, you know, as I moved through the process, I really felt like I wanted to come back. When I walked into city hall, it felt just comfortable, frankly, more comfortable almost than where I'm at now because I'd been here before. I knew the people. I knew what we had to accomplish. I think one of the challenges is going to be balancing the need to get all these projects done and prioritizing them appropriately and not draining our fund balance. There's a very robust fund balance. It's a lot better off than it was when I was here five or six years ago. And I know that was deliberate because of these projects. But I think the challenge is going to be able to, you've got to prioritize those things and make sure that we don't just spend all the money right away quickly when we might have other projects that are maybe a higher priority we don't know about yet. So.
Okay.
I know that you addressed some of your ideas for Northland in your first-year game plan. With that being said, how do you plan on getting your leadership team to buy into your vision on how you want the city to be ran? And how would you deal with resistance to that?
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd want to understand what the reason was behind the resistance. And if they've got a better idea, I'm more than willing to listen. Again, I've not been a city manager before, but I have worked with our leadership team pretty closely in Commerce City to implement this type of a plan. I will tell you that the leadership retreats is probably one of the best ways to clear the air, if you will, and have a safe place where people can provide feedback and I, we can get together and talk through it. I think there's a couple of different styles of management. There's this kind of informed consent where you tell people, this is what we're doing. And then there's just collaboration. And I think there's a time for both. When you're instituting a new idea, you really want to collaborate with people, get a lot of their feedback, get people on board, and address any concerns that they may have. At some point, the manager has to make a decision to move on. And I've seen that in Commerce City. We had to do that a couple of times. But more often than not, we try to build some consensus as long as it doesn't slow down the process.
Joe?
Tell us about a time when you lost your calm under pressure. What happened and what'd you do about it?
Okay. We have a developer in Commerce City, and I'm not going to name his name, but he's suing us right now. And he owns a piece of property that is in unincorporated Adams County. I've actually known this gentleman for about 20 years. And he does not seem to want to get off the dime and do anything. But yet, he wants to meet with us very, very frequently to talk about his project. We have gone around and around with him on urban renewal, TIF, zoning, incentives. It's a commercial retail project. And my motivation was just to try to get him to apply for annexation and zoning, and then we can kind of work through these issues. He got really hung up on access. And we built a road project in front of his property. We paid him for some right-of-way, which is what he's suing us over now. He wasn't satisfied with the access that we provided. I've always been very cool under pressure in talking to him. He's a difficult individual. And we had a city engineer that is no longer with the city that frankly created some of these access issues that I've been trying to clean up, if you will, along with our current public works director. And at one point in a meeting, he continued to beat on this issue and blame the people that were no longer in our organization. And I remember telling him, I said, "Dave, we've got to move on because those people aren't walking through the door to solve our problem." And it came off, I think, as a little harsh to him. He didn't care for it very much. But, you know, it had built up to a point after about two or three years, I'd kind of hit the wall with him. I will confidently say that, you know, we mended fences very quickly later in the week. You know, I had a lot of, spent a lot of time on the phone with him. And, you know, he's still a little frustrated with us, namely the lawsuit. But I'd say that's the one time I've lost my cool under pressure is, and it was in a private meeting. It wasn't like in a public meeting or anything like that. So, you know, sometimes people can't push my buttons. And I need to remind myself that it's usually a business deal, it's a public policy deal, it's not anything to get emotional over.
Kim?
Jim, can you describe for us the types of council, city manager, forms of government that you've worked with? And then in particular, your own work with nine bosses?
Yes, sure. Well, first, I, going way back, I worked in Minnesota, a town called Prior Lake. That was actually between undergrad and graduate school. I was an intern planner there. We had a planning commission. We had a city council. It was a council manager form of government, pretty strong manager in that case. In Adams County, I worked with three county commissioners. Now it's five, but when I was there, it was three. And that was a pretty interesting dynamic because that was back when they had a county administrator as opposed to a county manager. And so every department director was actually on annual contract with the county commissioners. So it was a pretty tenuous situation sometimes for the directors because they had, their direct bosses were the three county commissioners. So I had to be very, I don't want to say delicate, but, you know, cognizant of the fact that, you know, I had to represent our department, but I also had to represent that director because his or her neck was on the line with those county commissioners. Cut my teeth very early in Adams County, being able to provide presentations to a county commissioners, even as a planner one level, on a lot of complex development projects. Of course, here in Northland, the council manager form of government with nine city council members, as well as in Commerce City with the nine city council members, council manager form of government. How I balanced that relationship between all nine really goes back to that city manager report idea I mentioned in my work plan. The idea is that each of you are going to be getting contacted by a resident or a business owner and wanting some action on some specific issue. Clearly, sometimes those get brought up at a business meeting. You want to say it on camera. You want to make sure that the resident or something, you know, knows that you're bringing it up, which is totally appropriate. But a lot of times, it might just be a phone call, an email, stopping in the office telling me about something. That happens to me now in Commerce City. What we do is we take each of those items, and especially during What we do is we take each of those items, and especially during the business meetings, I'll track each of those, write them down. Sometimes we have a few, sometimes we have a dozen. Sometimes there's a lot of issues that we want to get tasked with. We put those into a customer relations management system, which is part of our larger system that citizens can access anyway. And we distribute those at the leadership team on the morning after the council meeting. We talk about them, what the potential outcome might be. And then we track them so that we can make sure when they're going to be addressed and get the report back to all the council members. We do a weekly report then that summarizes the outcomes of those issues and how they're being resolved. We report those back then on Monday nights. And in cases where it's a small thing, hey, this citizen called me about a pothole. It's handled, here's what we did. Some cases, it might be, I want a new traffic signal. Well, okay, here's how much the warrant study costs, here's how much the traffic signal might cost. We're going to bring that back to all of you and say, is that something you want us to investigate? Because that's going to take more than an hour or two of staff time, it's going to have a budget impact. So, it's those types of things that it's perfectly appropriate for each one of you to bring up an issue, but if it's got a budget or a staff impact, we're going to want to make sure we reach consensus amongst all of you so we can move forward with those types of projects. So, I think it's that balance of keeping our eyes on the prize long-term, but also handling those day-to-day things that all of you are getting hit with.
Jordan?
Some people prefer to solve problems alone while others prefer to work with a group. Tell us if you had a problem you had to solve alone, which had a direct impact on others. How did you do it?
Okay. I would say, probably most recently, we had a city council retreat in January. And one of the challenges we had was we're widening Highway Two from basically 72nd up to I-76. It was a C.DOT ramp grant, so it's a state highway now. They gave us $15 million, and then we're matching it with $5 million. And then we're going to build the road, widen it, and then they will devolve the road and it will no longer be a state highway, it will be a city arterial street. As we got into it, we found out the prior city engineer, and frankly, C.DOT wanted it to be really low cost. So, we did a 25/75 split in our cost estimate. C.DOT approved it. And we found that it was going to be probably seven to eight million dollars more than what we estimated. And the reality of it was that we had a lot more drainage issues than we thought about. There were probably three times as many individual property owners we were going to have to negotiate right away with, and it's right next to the Burling-Northern Railroad, which was a nightmare for anyone that's dealt with these RTD issues. So, the bottom line was it was going to cost a lot more. We had to figure out a creative solution to fund that project that might impact other capital projects. And not just road projects, we were trying to come up with trail money and drainage money. We even looked at some of our DIA 1A revenue, which we're going to be getting from Denver to fund some of it. And so, we put together a very detailed spreadsheet, which I worked on pretty much by myself with the finance department. But then I had to interact with our leadership team so that when we went into that retreat, they knew what the options were for council to consider. We presented six options. Council didn't pick any of those. But we came up with a really good hybrid solution of some of the options that enabled us to fund it. And we're actually going to use some of our 2K sales tax that was approved a couple of years ago to fund some of it. We're going to use some DIA money, we're going to use some drainage money. Kind of cobbled together a solution that definitely impacted at least two or three other departments in coming up with that solution. So, it was a way I had to work on by myself for a little bit, kind of get the ducks in a row, but then work with everybody else to make sure we were all on board, that we could accept whatever council decided.
Great, thank you.
I want to talk about passion. You're obviously very passionate about city government. You obviously enjoy it. What about this particular opportunity that's in front of you with the city of Northland sparks that passion? What do you feel most passionate about with our opportunity?
Well, I cut my teeth here on urban renewal for the first time in my career. I had never worked for a city before. I'd worked for counties, or a county. And so, that was really exciting when I was here. And when I went to Commerce City, that's where I thought I was going to kind of continue my career, doing the community development stuff, just focusing on urban renewal. As I moved up in leadership over there, I found that I've got a lot more to offer than what I'm doing now. So, it's not just urban renewal, which is very exciting. I think there's a lot of cool opportunities here. But I think some of the things I've laid out for you, like becoming more sophisticated with a work plan, prioritizing capital projects, really coming up with five, maybe even 10-year look-aheads on your capital program. Those are really exciting to me. I'm kind of a nerd when it comes to spreadsheets sometimes, but it is really, really interesting to me looking at those long-term vision, if you will, for the community. Maybe that's the planner in me still coming out, that I like to see, you know, things in the built environment. I like to see long-term vision plans come to realization. And there's plenty of opportunities for that in Commerce City, frankly. I mean, it's a growing community, there's a lot of growth going on there. But again, I think I'm ready to blend that COO/CEO role here and add a lot to Northland.
Thank you.
Antonio?
What's your worst professional problem?
Oh, boy. I think it may be what Councilman Whitton was talking about was the accessibility. It's sometimes a challenge for me. I get so focused on accomplishing a goal that sometimes I put my head down and just want to get it done. And, you know, I have to be very cognizant to make sure I'm still accessible for my staff and other people to be able to either get a meeting with me or get my input on an important issue that they're dealing with. I've kind of chalked it up a little bit to how fast things are going in Commerce City. But it's one thing I know I need to work on, is that I need to, you know, carve out times for those really important meetings and make sure that I am accessible for people.
Marcy?
Tell us about the most difficult citizen encounter you have experienced and how did you handle it?
Other than Dr. Rife, I trust. Okay. Let's see. I won't pick anyone in Northland. It was comic relief, is that okay?
Yeah, that's right. That's good. You understand, we all understand.
Yeah, I did, I did. That's why I said it, so. Sorry, now I'm blushing. You know, I think it might be probably some people in Adams County, if not, I think about it. When we were doing some plans in the Welby area, you're familiar with that part of Adams County, kind of Washington Street, 70th Avenue, we were trying to do a transportation plan. And this was in the mid-'90s. And if you're familiar with that area at all, it's a mix of agricultural, residential, industrial. And the roads, there aren't a lot of good connections through there. And what we were trying to do is sit down with the neighborhood and make sure that they understood that we weren't trying to ruin their quality of life with a bunch of road connections, but that we had true business interests down there that we needed to add those things in. We, of course, took a very logical approach with it. Here are the roads that need to go through, here's the width. And that fell flat. We had factions created down there with the businesses versus the residents. There were several people, frankly, not just one person, that kind of rose up against the staff in some public meetings down there that didn't go very well. What we ended up doing is having another check-in with our county commissioners at that time. And they instructed us basically to abandon the project, but keep it on the shelf, if you will, so that as projects came in from the business community, that we would maybe get the little pieces of road that we needed to try to implement the plan kind of piecemeal. But we weren't going to go through some public process and adopt a plan because it just had no citizen support to do it.
Well, our time has almost ended.
Oh, okay.
So, do you have any questions for us?
I might have a couple.
Uh-oh. Do you have a file?
Yeah, I have a file.
I'm sorry, we're not prepared.
Turn the tables, right?
Excuse me.
Are there any specific challenges that you see with the current leadership team, city departments, or any community issues that you know that we're going to warrant some, like, immediate attention that I'm missing? And maybe it's delicate to talk about the leadership team, but, you know, departments or community issues, maybe.
Well, you know, as far as the leadership team goes, they have come together since we haven't had a city manager for several months. And I think they're very strong. And I think, you know, that would, I think they're looking for a leader or someone to take charge of them, so. So, I think that's probably a challenge. As far as the community goes, community always wants input. They always want to know what's happening, so they clamor for that type of thing. Anybody else have any other?
I think the community always wants to know what's happening, but yet, there's a lack of participation in public meetings and public forums. So, how do you reach out to them and the right way to get them involved, involved? I think that's a problem here in Northland. There's got to be a solution somewhere, we just haven't found it yet.
We've tried several different avenues to fix it, but I don't know, I don't really see it work. But this year, we're starting the ward meeting postcards. So, we're hoping that that, you know, gets us in the right direction, maybe that'll be the answer.
Oh, if you do ward meetings, then?
Yeah, ward meetings and postcards mailed to everybody. Instead of it being, well, it's posted in the connection and stuff like that, but instead of it just exclusively being posted in the connection and having Yankee pedal go out and put notices on people's doors, everybody gets a postcard.
I remember when I was here before, those were pretty effective meetings, especially if you had a topic that people were interested in. And we always have the code enforcement people come. Because that was always a topic. But, you know, I mean, I think of, you know, the Webster Lake area, you know, we were talking about that at a meeting. I think, maybe we had a marketplace meeting once, you know, it was pretty effective if you've got something to tell people. A lot of people will sometimes be interested, so, good. All right. I'll put myself on the spot here. Are there any specific concerns about me as a candidate since I left the city in 2011? I think I've got more experience now than I had. Maybe I wasn't the right candidate a few years ago. But any specific concerns I should know about?
Well, I guess maybe to even turn it around a little bit, do you have concerns in that area? I mean, since you do have a relationship with some of the staff, so I think that's kind of a two-way street.
Okay.
Because I think it's uncertain in both areas, you know, so.
Well, you know, I had not connected with all of the staff, you know, before this process. Obviously, I talked to David on a regular occurrence at city manager-related things. Brooke and I see each other a lot at meetings. But, you know, I've not really interacted with a whole lot of the rest of the staff before I came back. And so, that was part of what I was telling a lot of you last night, you know, I was, frankly, I was a little nervous about coming back and rekindling those relationships. But after meeting with everybody, I feel so comfortable. I feel like we can just pick up where we left off and keep things moving forward. So, I really don't have any reservations at all about working with any of the staff. We've actually hired Corey Hoffman to do some stuff for us in Commerce City, so I've interacted with him a lot recently and, yeah, it's been great.
Right. I'm sorry I turned that around.
That's okay. I threw it up there for you, so. Okay. I don't have any other questions, other than how soon do you think you'll be making a decision?
You know, as quickly as we can. We don't have a timeline, but it will be a short timeframe, probably. I don't want to put any time on it, but within the next couple of weeks, we'll be meeting as a council here shortly and then we'll be, you know, making some type of decision, getting back with you.
Great.
Yes.
Well, I want to thank all of you for your time. I know this is a long process to go through, but hopefully, your investment in this process will yield a great candidate. Hopefully, I'm that candidate. I really do look forward to coming back and working here. So, I appreciate the opportunity again. Thanks.
And thank you, Jim, for applying, you know, and good luck, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you a minute to...
All right, all right, sounds good.
We would like to welcome you and thank you for applying for the position. And I'll just turn it over to you to talk about the plan that you developed.
Great. Thank you. Good to see you all again. I'm excited to be here. It'll be a wonderful opportunity for me, and I look forward to your getting to know me and understanding the kind of the match and fit and other elements of this. I had fun doing this first-year game plan, once I kind of figured out how to approach it. That was the biggest task. I actually went into it thinking it would be a project list or, you know, what can I contribute to the projects that might be necessary? Quickly realized, as you'll see, that that's not at all what I did. I approached this instead, after talking with all of you and all of the staff, as a three-fold project, to look at the people, the process, and of course, the projects, but less what to do than how to do them and how to get them done. So, it's not what I will do, but how I will do it and who I am that I want to share with you over the next few minutes here. Before I get into that, though, I need to explain that I think the first 100 days, 100 is a nice round number, I don't know if it's 80 or 120, but there's a significant number of days, perhaps weeks, that I want to use setting the foundation for the future. I want to spend time out in the community, getting to know you all, getting to know the leadership team and the staff at all levels of the organization. Staff of this size, there's no reason after a few weeks that I can't know them by name and by face. And likewise for them to know me. Staff throughout the organization, community members, business leaders, institutional and church leaders across the community, school and nonprofits, and getting out to know our partners and colleagues in other institutions and jurisdictions that we work with. So, this is in effect a listening tour. And what am I listening to? Well, you know, Einstein said, if I had an hour to solve a problem and my life depended on it, I'd spend the first 55 minutes determining the proper questions to ask. And I really believe that's the first task and perhaps the most important for your next city manager. What are some of those questions? You know, I've listed them here. What are some of the improvements? What are some of the areas that we can make a difference in? I want to hear from employees at all levels, what they like best and least about working for the city, how I can support you and how I can support them, what kind of specific improvements we can move forward with. And then, in general, what we're doing well that we can do better and what we're not doing well that we can improve on. I want to emerge from this listening tour, learning session, understanding the resources at all levels, human resources, financial resources. Started to understand through the whirlwind tours that I was led on yesterday, the facilities' needs. The police chief was very explicit about those down in this level here. A number of community meetings, both one-on-one and in small groups, I found are very effective. Not a great way to ask and answer those questions that I'm most interested in, in large group settings where you get a 20-minute presentation and a 10-minute Q&amp;A. I'd like that to be much more personal, to enable me, on your behalf, to build relationships and move forward. Also, very interested in determining what the city of Northland values are, what your values are. Not explicit to me yet, some of them certainly are. You have a very dedicated leadership team, you have an organization committed to service, but you see here some of the things that I bring to the table and some of the things I hold very near and dear to my heart and that I will bring to whatever position that I'm appointed to. Those include customer service, integrity, respect, environmental stewardship, innovation, and a very strong sense of teamwork and collaboration. So, as that listening tour is going on, I begin that focus on the three areas, the people, the process, and the projects. As far as people, I'm very used to managing a team of experts. It's something I'm accustomed to, I thoroughly enjoy. You have some great experts here. Working with them will be a pleasure. My definition of leadership is not position, it's not power, it's not control. It's working together, collaborating, and maximizing team efforts to accomplish goals. With that in mind, my approach to management and leadership is to provide individualized direction and support where it's needed. Not everybody needs the same direction and support. Someone new to a position may need a lot of both, direction and support. Someone who's been here for 30 years may need only periodic support and some check-ins and making sure we're headed in the right direction. But it's that process that I find fascinating in working with people, taking someone from a new position or moving from one position to another, working with them, doing the appropriate level of direction, coaching and support, moving them hopefully through a... level of direction, coaching and support, moving them hopefully through a series of phases, if you will, toward complete delegation and trust, never ever just cutting them free, that's not the point, we all have to be working together, moving forward. I do have two communication commitments that I want to make to you and that I would ask of everyone who works with me. These are pretty straightforward and simple, but they're non-negotiable in my mind, they're things that I would bring to the table. First one is no surprises. I never want to be alerted to something in the newspaper or by Seven News that I should have heard about yesterday or last week or this morning, whatever the case may be, from anyone in the organization, and that's my commitment to you as well. And then the second one is a, involves completed staff work. Again, in working with professionals and experts and you're working with me, you will not see me come into this room and drop a problem in the middle of the room and run or sit down. There will be problems, there will be issues, there will be challenges that we all have to face, but what I owe you and what the people that work for me, work with me owe me, is a series of alternatives. Well, you know, this is the issue, this is the challenge, and we could approach it this way or we could do something else. Sometimes there will be a solid recommendation, something that either we've faced before or that we've really thought through, you'll hear a solid recommendation from me right away. At other times, we're just starting to wrestle with something, it may come in the form of alternatives, you know, worst-case, least-case alternatives, most resources, least resources, whatever the case may be. The other part of my working with people is that it's my understanding after many years of working with people that there really is, in my mind, only one true motivator. You know, money may work for a while, nice office situations with beautiful views may help for a little bit, but really the only lasting one in my mind is for people to be valued in the organization. They need to be included in the decision-making, they need to know their contribution counts, and that needs to be genuine and authentic and not just a, hey, you know, good job, but very specific praise and celebration of successes along the way. That gets buy-in and continues buy-in throughout the way. This comes with a very dangerous flip side, and that flip side is that when there are immediate decisions that need to be made or emergency situations that call for immediate action, can't involve everybody, after the situation has calmed down, the crisis has passed or whatever, that needs to be explained to people. Why weren't they involved? Why didn't I go to the entire management team instead of just the police chief and making a decision? To do that is very important in maintaining this value and the, maintaining the sense of why this is important to people. As far as process, I look at everything through what I call a triple bottom-line lens, that's looking at things from the economic perspective, looking at things from what's best for the social perspective and neighborhoods, and certainly environmental health. The objective is always to maximize those three. At times, these are at odds, though, that we all make decisions every day that may be in the best interest of the economy and may have some environmental impacts. That happens, that will happen, we just need to know that going in and make very wise, conscious, value-driven decisions. Numbers count with me, I'm a very data-driven person. I like numbers, I like to know how the organization is working, certainly financially and otherwise, but the bottom line for me is what are we doing for people and what are the impacts on people and all the decisions that we make? How are we affecting the quality of life in Northland? I really work hard to establish and maintain smart goals, I think you've all heard of these, but these are very important to me. There are a couple of areas, I think you're aware, these are specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. The one that gets trickiest for me is the time-bound part of this, and that's the area of establishing and maintaining good, solid expectations amongst all of you and with staff. It's very easy to set goals, it's also very easy to lose track of where those are as competing priorities and projects start entering in. Need to be careful about that and set realistic, time-bound goals. The other part of my approach is to, as I said, I'm numbers-driven, I like data, I like to know how departments are doing, the quantities of work they're doing, but that's not my focus. I don't want to focus on outputs. It's really less important to me that I know how many potholes the streets crew filled last week compared to what is the perception of the community? How smooth are the streets? Are the streets passable? A lot of times, that's much more difficult to measure. Submit a report with 500 potholes filled last week, but you've got to get out in the community, you've got to do annual surveys or so, and understand from you all and from the community members, how are we doing? How are the streets? It doesn't matter, at the bottom line, how many potholes we're filling if there's still a perception out there that the streets are a mess. And I apply that, I use streets as an example, but that's an approach through every department. So it's really what, not what we're doing, but what are the changes and benefits we're delivering for the community that count. As far as my approach to communication, it's pretty straightforward. I want to be transparent and approachable. It's kind of tried to say an open-door policy, but it truly is with me. I want to be available to you all, to the community members, and certainly to staff. Reports and the communication you get to me will be thorough, accurate, and complete. And it's very important, whether there are two council members or nine, as you all are, that you understand that I will not be taking sides, not be playing favorites. If there's communication goes out, going out, it's going out to you equally and being provided on a fair, open-minded basis in a responsive way that makes sense. You'll be getting regular updates from me, of course, in study sessions and the beginning of or the end of council meetings, but in addition to that, I want to be responsive to your phone calls, your emails, your constituent concerns, handling those on a regular and timely basis. And then following that up with what I've been using for several years very successfully is called a heads-up email, basically, very simple, not lengthy, but between meetings, you may get an email from me that says, you know, here's an update on that, I know last Monday we talked about something, here's the latest on that, or here's an event or two to remind you about coming up this weekend, that sort of thing. You're free to read those, press delete immediately, whatever you'd like to do, but that's the kind of communication that I would like to be able to send you. The other part of the process is that, as I mentioned, I'm a very collaborative decision-maker, very collaborative problem solver, and that involves involving the people affected by any given situation or problem early on in the process and determining what, who's being affected by something, defining and understanding the problem, and keeping that problem definition constant throughout the, throughout the problem-solving session, establishing our need to act, our legitimate role to act, thoroughly identifying and analyzing alternatives, pros and cons of each, coming up with the most reasonable alternative as a recommendation. Lastly, one of the things that's easy to do in the public sector is to forget that there are oxes that get gored from different policies, that there are people whose interests may be affected, we need to care about them as well, mitigate those impacts and show them legitimately that we care. As far as projects, like I say, you don't need me bringing a list of projects to you. You have plenty, you have plenty on the plate. Your 2014 strategic plan, in fact, going back to the 2010 comprehensive plan and the strategies there, they're very thorough, it's a wonderful list, exciting list of projects to do. I won't read them to you, you all know better than I, but one of the really interesting things for me, very refreshing things, in talking to all of you and all of the leadership team, you need to know that this list is imprinted very, very deeply in all of your minds and all of their minds. There's a great deal of agreement on these projects and alignment. Leadership team has heard from you about your priorities. That's, these are not easy projects, but it was easy to list this list of priorities. It's not so easy, it's to figure out how to prioritize among those. You can't do them all, especially all at once, I mean, you can do them all, but they need to be phased. How do we prioritize? What's first and what follows? What are the resource and schedule needs? How do we set and manage realistic expectations? Last thing that I want to be doing is disappointing this community and you all. So an important part there is to not make promises that we can't keep together, to be realistic about the amount of time it's going to take to deliver quality projects. You may need some additional study session time, it's one of the concerns I would have going in and looking at this list of projects, understanding your current meeting schedule. This is not hours and hours in my mind, but an hour in front of a council meeting, perhaps a special Tuesday meeting or two throughout the month to really focus, not on four topics, but on a topic. These are extraordinary issues, and to the extent that you want involvement in them, it will take time, and staff owes it to you to come to you with very clear questions, you know, direction needed from council tonight is on, and three things or so. So laying out those questions, clarifying with every project, there are going to be cost, quality, and time implications to every decision that you make. Something, if you want it to be delivered on time, there may be cost and quality implications, not on time, but faster, on a fast track. Likewise, if quality and time, you have a lot of quality and time issues, the cost may go up. So playing those three, not against each other, but balancing them, works well. Cost information, there are multiple ways of looking at costs, of course, capital operating, those immediately come to mind, but there are long-term maintenance issues, there are lifecycle costs, how long do you want a certain facility or piece of equipment to last? And then the trade-offs involved, the opportunity costs involved, if you're building a justice center on a particular piece of property, that means something else can't be built there. I want you all to understand that and to be firm in your direction on that. Risk assessment of the options, you know, there are a number of other communities going through the same things, currently involved in building a police department and replacing a city hall building. Multiple communities around the country, around the world are doing that, let's learn from them, let's benchmark and learn best practices. And then one of the other lessons I've learned from multiple large capital projects, especially in this age of really escalating inflation and construction costs, is the value of bringing a pre-construction contractor onboard as part of the design team. There's a cost there, getting a contractor onboard, but it's so helpful to have someone who's actually going to be building or could be building a facility in the room as the architects start talking about Italian marble or something that needs to be imported from elsewhere or something that may take a long time to build. Lastly, at the end of this first year, it's important to do a year-end reflection, to look at how we're doing, what are the accomplishments, what are the successes, what are the disappointments and shortcomings, and what have we learned from that? I'd like to do that at this level, I'd like to do that with staff. That helps in not only kind of wrapping up the first year, but also setting the tone, setting the direction for the future year, determining what the next year's goals will be. So in summary, my focus first year would be on council, staff, community outreach and input, asking a lot of questions. I want to identify the challenges and get to work immediately on improvements. I'm all about service, this is an organization that's in the service business, that's from the most recently hired parks maintenance worker to everybody in the organization. We need to be in the customer service business. As you've seen, this is not a detailed plan, this is not a specific program. Anything that I do that would be specific and detailed, I think would be wrong, premature, and perhaps most importantly, would not have buy-in. So I'm not doing that, this is a flexible agenda. I want to communicate, demonstrate that I do care, I can be trusted, and I will follow through. And then lastly, aligning the community, this council, and staff, so we're all moving in the same direction. Those six keys to success, just in summary, I want to listen and learn, find out a lot about you, about this community. I seek to under-promise and over-deliver so that I'm not disappointed. Providing service excellence and continuous improvement is important in every public-sector organization. Establishing and managing those realistic expectations we talked about, I'm flexible, I'm versatile, I can go a number of different directions. Set a plan, but there may be deviations in that as we go, new priorities that come in. And lastly, and this is, I'm serious about this, this is a part of this, I believe the public sector and working in local government in particular is a passion, is a calling. It's not something we just casually do. It's not just a next step on our run of ladder to success that I have in my mind. This is something I want to do, will spend long hours doing, and darn it, I want to have fun doing it, and have a sense of taking our jobs very seriously, but not ourselves, and enjoying the staff and helping staff to come to work and want to have fun and want to be there. So thank you for that opportunity.
All right. Are there any questions for Randy? Yes, Kim?
Mayor, so, Randy, one of the things that I caught on to you said, no surprises when you don't want to hear about something around 5:00 p.m. If that situation were to occur, how would you handle it?
Immediate follow-up and find out what the situation is. I mean, sometimes, I mean, that's why they're called investigative reporters, they seek to get a scoop, so that will occasionally happen. Occasionally happen for no intentional malice or anything, somebody honestly just didn't know there was a situation arising. A community member may go to a news reporter or something unbeknownst to all of us, we can't help that other than creating a sense of an environment of trust where that community feels that they can come to us, rather than having to run to a reporter. I deal with that very regularly in the small community I'm in now, has two daily papers, four reporters dedicated to the city beat, and so they're seven days a week, 365 days a year, looking for that scoop, looking for that insight. The best way to avoid that or to deal with that, in my mind, when it does happen, is just to get to, you know, get to the ground of it, get to the basis, why did that happen? How did it happen? What's the situation? What do we need to do about it? And then, very importantly, how can we avoid it in the future? Let's learn from that situation.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, let me start with a question. Is there anything you would like us to know about you or anything, anything at all, just what you'd like to tell us?
It's a very broad question, thank you. You know, I shared with you a bit of who I am and how I approach work. Couple of things that perhaps you should know about me is I have a deep commitment to Colorado, I'm a fourth-generation Coloradan. I have no desire to leave this state, I love it. I've been in multiple areas of it, starting in Southern Colorado where I was born and raised, was in the metro area for about 14 years before moving to the mountains. I feel a deep sense of commitment to the values of, that most Coloradans share, their sense of environmental stewardship and the importance of the environment, the beauty around us, getting out and about, and really protecting that and enhancing that for not only yourselves, but for future generations. And then secondly, I touched on it, but I really want to reaffirm my service orientation. I approach this job, any job that I'm in, as a service-oriented manager and leader. I'm not here for acclaim and for fanfare. I want to lead a solid team to do great projects. I don't care if it's the credit, I want you all to get the credit, frankly, and to move forward in a very service-oriented, listening, learning approach.
Thank you. Karen?
Hi, Randy. Can you give us an example of a time when you had to reuse expenses? How did you determine where to cut the costs and what was the impact?
Sure. The most strident example of that certainly is every community in the country had to go through that into going into the recession. The resort communities perhaps led the way. It was a myth, as we found out, that resort communities were immune to recession. Aspen, Steamboat Vale, and all the other resort communities kind of glided through all the previous recessions. That wasn't the case with the Great Recession, we just went through, starting in 2008, the resort communities in fact were impacted first and perhaps hardest at the very beginning. Were very early kind of canaries in the mind, because one of the first things that got cut was group and corporate travel. Almost every corporation in the country after, I think it was Wells Fargo, doesn't matter, but one of the big banks, headlines in the newspaper, Wells Fargo continues its Las Vegas convention spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on executives. That stopped, stopped right up to almost nothing. So the initial impact was a 5% cut, was another 5% cut a year later, ended up being about an 18% reduction in force and production of budget. It was very painful to go through. The approach that I take, that we took for that, and I would take to any further kind of budget reduction, is, as I said, involving people. I do not believe in across-the-board cuts. That's easy, relatively easy, just to write a memo saying, okay, reduce, everybody reduce your budget by 5%. It's not appropriate. There may be, and in this case, were certain areas, we wanted to actually increase funding. Those happened to be in marketing, special events, and Aspen operates a performing arts center that's very active. We actually increased the budget, those budgets in those areas in order to continue the vibrancy and the number of people that could be attracted to the town. Other areas were cut more significantly. There were entire departments that were cut more like 10% or so. Training and supply budgets were slashed almost to zero, so people were getting by for a short time. Now, you can do that in a short time, but the last thing we wanted to do was to cut training entirely, because there's such a dividend paid on developing employees. So it's that kind of involving people at the department level to engage in that process and to discuss needs, discuss issues, come up with their own solutions, rather than hearing from the manager's office, you just lost your training budget. It's important for them to be involved in that and to understand, they understand their budgets better than any of us, come up with our own ideas about, here's what we can contribute to solving this problem.
Karen?
Good morning, Randy.
Good morning, Kim.
There was a story on NPR yesterday that according to the National Association of Realtors, millennials now make up the largest segment of homeowners in the nation. What innovative ideas do you have to ensure that Northland stays on the cutting edge of this new marketplace?
It's a great question, being the father of two millennials myself and understanding and having numerous millennials in the workforce in that... and having numerous millennials in the workforce, and that number will continue to grow. They're a wonderful, vibrant, fun segment of society to be working with, and reading lots about, and just like this NPR story, about their needs, their perceived needs for everything from travel to types of hotels they're looking for, and the type of housing that they want. Those have changed. The typical three-bedroom, two-bath with a picket fence in front is, over time, going to be replaced by other values. They want to be mobile, they want to be able to, in many cases, turn the key and walk away and not worry about a large yard that, over a 10-day break or something, may turn into a jungle. And they are very social. We're seeing that in these new hotels and the new housing complexes that are being built. It used to be that a clubhouse was kind of an afterthought, well, build a clubhouse because we have to. Millennials are using those clubhouses. They're gathering there. They're having Friday afternoon clubs and meeting people, pool parties and things like that. So I think it's very important that we stay in tune with that. Board of Realtors and numerous surveys are going out, certainly the news organizations are keeping us all abreast of what those are. It's very important that we stay abreast of what those changes are and then incorporate those into land use code, into the zoning code rewrite, understanding that these kind of communal spaces, areas for people to socialize and get to know each other, are going to become increasingly important. Maybe some changes that need to be done over time in terms of the existing housing stock, enabling some lot combinations, for instance, or some new types of housing to be developed relatively quickly with as few impediments from the local government as possible. And really accommodating while at the same time not just turning over the cart and giving them the complete keys to the communities.
Joe.
Describe a time where you had to sell your idea, why didn't you do it?
Multiple examples of that. I prefer not to look at it as selling, I prefer to have it be seen as sharing ideas. And I'm not one that carry an arrogance or a sense that I'm always right and that, you know, it's an idea that has to be sold. If it's an idea that gets shot down for whatever reason, or I'm told there aren't the resources or isn't the time to do that, I don't take that personally. But one really recent one, among the issues that Aspen is facing is a real mobility issue in terms of getting into town and then moving around town once you're there. We have a very extensive $5 million a year bus system, local bus system, as well as valley-wide bus rapid transit that's now going on. But once people get to town, the downtown area gets immediately congested. By 10:00 in the morning, all the spaces can be filled. So we're working on that in a number of ways, with a paid parking program, parking garage just outside of the downtown. One of the ideas I just took to council last month, in fact, was something that's working in a number of other resort communities, which is our small electric carts, electric carts, excuse me, that operate free of charge to the community members, but the electric cart drivers would accept tips, excuse me, and the vehicles themselves are funded by sponsorships. So there might be an ad from a real estate company or a restaurant or something on these small, as they say, their electric vehicles, neighborhood electric vehicles, they're called, four-to-six-seater. Working extremely well, as I say, in a number of California and Florida communities. Had the idea to try that in Aspen and see if we couldn't encourage people to park their car, and then if they didn't want to walk, take one of these electric carts. Presented that case in terms of the opportunities, the costs, what I saw as the potential benefits. Council at that time wasn't ready to proceed with that. There were a couple of concerns, and they're very legitimate. First was the advertising, the amount of advertising, signage and signs are issues, especially on vehicles. Avoided putting signage in the exterior of buses, allowed on the interior, and certainly the direction, wayfinding and business signs, but allowing, you know, the entire vehicle to be wrapped would be a big issue. I get that. And majority of council said, you know, no, let's not try that now. Come back if you want to with another way to do that that doesn't involve kind of in-your-face Joe Skrill, no pun intended, all over it. Yeah, exactly. And so that's realistic. And so what that means is that we won't be able to implement it in time this summer, but I believe the staff will come up with a plan that may well work and address those concerns the next time.
Did you want to take a drink?
My fine, yeah.
I'll ask a long question so you have time to get a little bit of water there. So as you can see, we're taking this information, this session for our residents, and, you know, we all have a lot more information about your background and your candidacy. So can you just tell us why you think you're the best candidate for our city manager, and then your direct relationship or experiences rather with our service areas in the city?
I'm sorry, the last part of the question?
Your experience and with what the services that our city provides to our residents.
Sure.
Departments and stuff, your direct experience.
Okay, sure. As far as the first part of your question, I think I'm a good candidate for you for, I'll call it three reasons. I think the first is my approach, I tried to be very clear about that. I'm a collaborative person, I love to communicate, I love people, I love to be out and about, one-on-one, small groups. Like I say, I'm not keen on the Donald Trump type of rallies, type of things with 5,000 people in the room, that's not my approach. I'd like to do it in small groups and one-on-one much more appropriately, with you, with the community, with the staff. So you'll see that from me. The other part of my approach is that I believe I bring extensive experience in coordinating staff, not collaborating, collaborating is part of it, that's me with them. The other part is getting them to work together, coordinating their efforts, integrating staff. I have extensive experience in what I call a matrix organization, where you pull the appropriate resources from various departments rather than allowing siloing. These projects, your project list is really prone to that, it's ideal for that. You don't need just the public works department, in fact, go a piece of bold to say that some of these projects will fail if you only have the public works department involved in them. You need finance, you need the justice center, the police department needs to be integral in that, your engineering folks, your folks in other departments, communication, et cetera, pulling together that matrix organization, that team with the best expertise. I have experience in that, I love working that way. And then lastly, you all want to get a lot done. I have a track record of getting a lot done. I am an implementer. I love that part of this job, I love working with council and community to move forward and get projects done. Everything from transit and transportation projects to housing projects, expanding affordable daycare, working with the community on environmental initiatives, reducing waste, reducing, increasing recycling, reducing plastic bags and plastic water bottles. Things like that are programs and projects that I have a track record of accomplishing and love an opportunity to come and share that. As far as the services and programs that you provide, I spent some time, I did a little exercise, in fact, last night that I found very instructive, in going through your budget and understanding what I've been hearing over the last several days from your staff. Your general fund departments are all very familiar to me, they're departments that I am familiar with, have worked with for a number of years, you know, certainly your finance, police, communications, public works, IT, et cetera. Familiar with that, used to working in a collaborative team to manage those approaches, determine budgets and manage them. There are a number of other areas that, as a resort community, somewhat isolated in that Roentworth Valley, Aspen provides that you do not, and I think for good reason. But those experiences give me a level of understanding of new projects and new priorities. A number of years ago, I, part of my portfolio responsibilities turned to be the Wheeler Opera House. So the gem of downtown Aspen, 1888 construction, 350-some performances a year, with some big names coming in at affordable prices. I can tell you, I know absolutely zero about the performing arts. Well, I knew that, I've learned since, but what a mentor of mine has really expressed to me, and it's something that I've come to firmly believe, is that you can manage anything that you can understand. If you can understand it, be able to set goals and expectations, ask good, solid questions, you can manage that program. So I'm not a performing artist, I don't have a theater degree, but I am very proud of the accomplishments of the Wheeler Opera House. I've had the chance to now hire three executive directors. I know what I'm looking for, I'm an executive director of a performing arts center. I also know that that's not me, that's not my toolset. So that's the approach that I take and the confidence that I've gained in being able to manage everything from performing arts centers to ice rinks, to a golf course, having an environmental health, a city environmental health department that does its own restaurant inspections and does a great number of environmental initiatives, working with the community, daycare and housing programs that the city operates, and then transportation and parking that we've talked about. Those are things that aren't in Northland, don't need to be in Northland because you have them provided in other ways, but I bring that, I'll call it a level of experience, a level of oversight that helps me coming into whatever new situation there might be.
Okay. Jordan.
That's great. Kind of piggybacking off that question, what homework have you done on us that was most surprising or best or worst kind of scenario? And also, why Northland? Why do you want to be here, coming from Aspen?
It's a great question, if I can, I'll start there and then come back to surprises. First of all, I think there are three reasons that I'm here right now, and I'm excited to be here. First of all, it's the right time in my life, my wife's life. As I mentioned, we've got two boys, both of them are out of the house, one is finishing college, one is in sophomore year, both of them are down here in the metro area. Both of our families are here, and we're looking for a chance to move back. This is home, as I say, I'm from Southern Colorado, spent a number of years here, love the metro area, and we're looking for an opportunity to move back. Right time, this is the right place. You know, I am familiar with this community, having lived in Brighton for a couple of years when I was in the metro area. At that time, Northland was kind of the nearest mall, certainly, and the nearest number of services, because Brighton was a very small place, and it no longer is. So I'm familiar with Northland and familiar with the community, love the size, I love the fact that it is a community and that, and perhaps can talk about it with other questions that you have, but the word landlocked came up a lot with you all and certainly with staff. I don't necessarily, in fact, I don't at all see that as a negative. Comes with some conditions, obviously, and some things that may be uncomfortable from time to time in terms of wishing you had more land to work with, but that enables us to be really good stewards of what we have and to create this community, to let it be strengthened, let it grow, and to make sure we're doing things right the first time. We don't have a chance to mess it up and then say, well, well, let's go elsewhere and build it again. Can't do that. Let's do it right the first time. So it's the right time, it's the right place, and I love these challenges. The more I found out about what you have on the plate, I'd love to roll up my sleeves and dive in to be working with you all. As far as surprises, one of the things I mentioned briefly, the level of alignment. You know, whenever Ron and his staff presented that assignment to present this first-year plan, I thought, wow, this is going to be interesting, a chance to talk to 21 leaders in the community. I fully expected to hear, if not 21, at least 15 different priorities, lists of priorities. As I mentioned, you all are very consistent, not necessarily in the exact numbers, but those projects are all familiar to you all, and you all agree on them in terms of getting them done. Now, like I say, which one is the highest priority, which one should be done first, second, third, there's some work to be done on that, but that's refreshing. And you all have done a great job in working with staff because they are, you know, they weren't reading off lists, they were at the top of their mind in terms of what their priorities were. That was refreshing. The other thing that I find incredible is just that space we were in last night with Webster Lake Promenade and projects like that, opportunities to do things like that. After the session last night, took a walk around, it was amazingly vibrant, there were lines out the door at every one of those restaurants, people coming and going, having a great time. It was a Friday night, great weather, that helped, but opportunity to do that for the community, opportunity for the community to really benefit from retail, restaurant, commercial projects like that, opportunity to keep local revenues local, instead of everybody feeling like they have to go to LODO on a Friday night. Wonderful. I'd love to be part of that.
Thank you.
Becky.
Can you address maybe one or two major development projects that you've participated in from the beginning? The planning, the negotiations, and the finalization of the project?
Sure. One relatively recent one, I'll try to do two if I have time, but one that's very poignant to me, is one that I was able to be involved with very early on in the planning stages, working with a developer on a blighted area of Aspen that had been kind of the last remaining industrial area, if you will, is where Klaus Obermeyer had started his Obermeyer clothing line back in the late 40s, early 50s. The property dated to that time and was very rundown. Obermeyer's since relocated all of their manufacturing abroad and their distribution to the Stapleton area, but they maintained offices and there were a number of other kind of leased spaces there that had become very rundown. The area, the property around it, et cetera, it was really ripe for redevelopment. The opportunity to start working with the developer early on, because one of the biggest problems, constraints they would be having, was going to be construction staging. And it's a very responsible developer, they didn't want to dislocate the businesses that were there. They wanted to be responsible for them, keep them in business throughout construction with the hope of moving them back into the new project. That's very challenging in a, call it landlocked, space-constrained community, to work very creatively with the developer and all the city departments in finding nooks and crannies, if you will, spaces. Part of our recycling center, for instance, we tightened the recycling center, we were able to put two modular office buildings, they're office trailers, that kept two businesses, two small businesses going through a three-year construction process. We found other areas, there had been an old abandoned alley, the utilities were still in the alley, but the alley wasn't useful. We worked with the city council in making that stretch of land available for four more of these modular units, and kept these businesses going. Not ideal by any means, they didn't have great brick and mortar, but they survived, they survived well, getting through that process, and then were fortunate enough to be able to move back into the new project, which is a condo-minimized commercial building, where they're actually able to buy their space for the first time, as small businesses, everything from bike shops to ski repair shops. There were some accountants that were involved, doctor's office, et cetera, that were able to own their space, determine their own future. Incredibly gratifying to see that, not only to clean up what was a kind of an ugly, ugly part of town, right across from one of our major parks, and everyone that went by kind of shook their heads, you know, what are they doing? So seeing that, working very early on, from, you know, understanding what the project was, through the demolition, relocation of the businesses, moving forward through the project, making sure that the bulk and mass worked in the neighborhood, and there were also residential components, helping them to create that kind of residential that would sell, very, working very well, as Kyle's question on millennials. Millennials love that place, there's a number of studio one- and two-bedroom units, condos there, that are working very well. So that was very gratifying, like I said, not cleaning up the area that it was, but seeing what became. Number of others, just briefly, the one I'm most recently proud of is the grand opening of a new downtown transit station that replaced a 40-year-old facility that was grossly outdated and undersized. We were able to get resources from five different sources, federal grants, state grants, county and our sister local government, Snowmass Village, some city resources and some transit agency resources, put together to build a wonderful new $10 million transit facility that serves as the hub of transit. People can move from down valley to other local transit there, wonderful new restrooms, sufficient waiting space to get out of the elements, et cetera. Very proud of that, and so we just submitted that project for some awards that we believe it'll win because it's really environmentally friendly, works well in downtown, and people are loving it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Antonio.
Ren, would you describe the most culturally diverse environment you've ever worked in? Tell us one difficulty you encountered and how you handled that.
Sure, there've been a number of them. As you can see from my resume, after graduate school, I spent about a year, a little over a year in New York City, which is about as culturally diverse as any community that there is in the world. And wonderful experience, great opportunity to have a fellowship there. I was one of 20 completing graduate students that were invited to actually come to New York City. We were funded from the central human resources department, had an opportunity then to go and, in effect, interview department heads, because we were free labor for them, they didn't have to pay out of their own budgets, and so got to interview and find out where we wanted to work. I ended up working in the Department of Community, planning for Manhattan, working on mostly waterfront and Upper East Side types of issues. Wonderful opportunity there to work, not Wonderful opportunity there to work not only within the organization, but within the community. Part of the Upper East Side called Yorktown, which had originally been mostly German immigrants that were there. And it was the last remaining auto service repair area in Manhattan. To go get your car repaired, of course, anybody who owns a car in New York is a different matter, but to get your car repaired, had to go to either New Jersey or way out on Long Island. So the city council determined that they wanted to keep a portion of this. Working with that community, working with staff on a number of these, they were first and second-generation immigrants at that point. The Latino community had been in the surrounding neighborhoods for a long time. Great opportunity within the city itself to work with, had a mobility-impaired individual who's my supervisor, and who convinced me that accessibility is not an issue. He said, "Everything's accessible, Randy. Come on." And I soon realized that was, whether we were meeting in a church or convention center, whatever, if there were stairs, that meant that I was lifting Dennis up those stairs. So that was his definition of accessibility at the time, and that was great. We had a great time. Working with everyone from, like I say, recent immigrants, African-Americans, Latinos, and had a really eye-opening experience for a young boy from Southern Colorado. Certainly, where I'm at, where I have been for the last 20 years, it lacks, I'll call it cultural diversity, if you will, or socioeconomic diversity as far as the number of residents in town. But throughout the Orange Fork Valley and the Western Slope, great deal of cultural and ethnic diversity. The Latino workforce is essential to operating any other resort communities that are there. It's an opportunity to work with them, understand their values and needs, provide services throughout that valley. A number of other, again, recent immigrants and folks that have been there for a while. I love that environment. As I mentioned, I'm very collaborative. And I think it's important that we have diverse perspectives, diverse cultures, working on any single issue and problem. Enjoy that a lot. Certainly, my time in Denver, working downtown Denver, I had an opportunity to work with and serve the 35,000 students at the time down in Araria, come from all backgrounds, all races, ethnicities, religions, et cetera. It was fun. A big part of the job.
Mercy?
Tell us about a time when you were overwhelmed with your own tasks but still had to make yourself available to staff. How did you do it?
You know, it's a great question. And certainly would be one of the issues for your next manager in dealing with, my count, I think there are 11 director ports, and of course, nine of you, just doing the numbers game and figuring out, well, even 15 or 30 minutes a week, that's a time commitment. That happens. It happens a lot. One of the things that I like to do is set aside time, a few minutes in the morning, and then certainly the time when I'm not in meetings from 5:00 to 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. Don't get me wrong, I'm not a workaholic, but I find it very, excuse me, very important to have uninterrupted time at certain points of the day when I can work on the work I have to do. If it's a certain memo that has to get out on a deadline or whatever, I don't try to do that at 10:00 in the morning because it can't get done then. As I mentioned, I'm approachable, I have an open-door policy, and there are a number of commitments that I have to staff and the community. Can't choose, I choose not to turn the phone off or not respond to emails or not respond to someone looking to see me. So I make that part of the day, make that part of the plan. If I know I have a deadline, know I have a big project, I schedule that when I know I can get that done in uninterrupted fashion without impeding them. What I never want to do is, you know, put a sign on the door, "Do not disturb," because that's as important or more important than whatever it is that I may be working on. On those occasions where there is something that has to be done, has to be done right now, the door has to be closed, I'm pretty good about letting people know. I'm not mad, I'm not sad, I'm just working. I got a tight deadline. Council members are expecting this by noon. Letting them know that that's an exception and certainly not the rule. So that's, you know, their ways of doing that with reasonable people and just letting my admin assistant know that, "Yeah, I need you to catch my calls for the next half an hour because I've got to get this done." So just communicating and being wise and reasonable about it, I think, is the best approach.
Thank you. Okay. Can you tell us how you communicate project changes and progress to the appropriate people? And what procedures do you put in place to accomplish this?
As far as the communication itself, yeah. One of the best approaches that I've found is to use study session and whatever limited time there might be available for updates at council meetings and study session time. Be very clear with council and the community about what the project is, what the issues are, and what the update is. Certainly, if there's any kind of direction needed, being upfront about that, how to approach it. One of the best tools that I've found that we incorporated a few years ago are, you know, as you know, the formal minutes and recordings of all these meetings are helpful. But started doing something called work session summary notes that are really very basic, very straightforward, not complete meeting minutes, but decisions reached. So it's very clear. And as soon after study sessions in particular, because as you know, there aren't votes on those, where there are more head nods and, you know, kind of thumbs up or thumbs down. Making sure that we're leaving work sessions with clear direction, that the majority of you are moving us forward in a certain way. And then recording that and getting it back out to you. So those aren't just minutes stuck away in the clerk's office. Those get back out to you by email or however you want to look at them. Like, "Here's what we heard and with a request, please let us know if we got it wrong." So that the updates then would be based on that as a baseline. Okay, we heard six of you or seven of you, or hopefully nine of you say this. Here's how we're proceeding. We had this setback or this challenge or we're moving ahead more quickly than we thought we were. Again, using study sessions and council meetings, using that heads-up email that I discussed. I think that's very helpful just to keep you all abreast, not of everything, again, because we can inundate each other with paper if we're not careful and look at your packet sizes. I don't want to do that, but I do want to keep you abreast of what's happening if there's any kind of deviation from what we said in the previous study session so that you know and that you're not disappointed and that you're not surprised by something that somebody says in the hallway about, "Oh, I hear you're three months behind on some project." You need to hear that from me. You need to hear why and what the alternatives are rather than being caught off guard in a community meeting someplace. So those are the main ways that I do that. Certainly, anything more urgent, require a phone call or a personal meeting, very familiar and comfortable doing that.
Thank you. Carol?
From what you've learned about Northland thus far, what do you foresee will be your biggest challenge should you become city manager? And how will you overcome it?
You said "challenge," if I might, I would say "two," two challenges, because I think they go hand in hand. One, I've already mentioned, it's the numbers game. Nine of you, 11 staff, the other 200 and some staff in the organization. That's a challenge. Challenge to get to know you all, challenge to understand how you like to work, how you like to receive information, et cetera. Working with staff, just finding the amount of time to apply my management style, which, as I said, I want to be hearing from them, from the least experienced to the most experienced. Not micromanaging, but working with them, seeing them, helping to know, getting to know how I can help them and what areas of direction and support they may be needing. So, challenge in terms of time management. Part of that refers back to my style, that response to Marcy about carving out real quality time when I can get something done uninterrupted and then leaving the rest of the time that I'm available. So that's one challenge. The other challenge and one that I'm certainly up to and excited about is getting reacquainted with Northland, with the metro area. I've been away for a few years. I think that's a wonderful thing, in my mind. I'm looking forward to being back. And it's wonderful, I think, for you all in that I've got a fresh perspective. I have been back to the metro area, back through and to Northland over the years, but I'm coming in with fresh eyes. I've got a lot to learn and a quick time to do that. But I'm a quick learner and it's the sort of thing that I love to do. So I'm looking forward to meeting that challenge.
Thank you. Kyle?
I know that you addressed some of your ideas for Northland in your first-year game plan. With that being said, how do you plan on getting your leadership team to buy into your vision on how you want the city to be ran? And how would you deal with resistance to you?
The first part of buy-in gets back to my approach to motivation, which is involving people and empowering people to be part of the decision-making process. As I mentioned, I'm not bringing a rigid, defined set of my expectations as the way I want to do things. There are some things, I've mentioned them as we go along, that are with me, non-negotiable. Those are relatively few, and those are what I think are basic human issues and involve respect. So it's certain things that come with me that I won't budge on, but it's relatively few. And so the rest of it, in terms of how we're working together, how we're communicating, that sort of thing, those are all collaborative decisions. And there will be a significant amount of buy-in, significant amount of collaborative decision-making, involving the people. So it's their idea, their plan, their approach, in fact, our approach collaboratively that we're presenting. And it's not coming from the manager's office. Here it comes again, you know, the Friday email, "We've got to change the way we're doing payroll." You won't see me doing that. We may change the way we're doing payroll, but that's going to come in conjunction with collaboration with the staff. And I'm sorry, there was a second part of that question, how I get buy-in.
Yeah, how would you do with any resistance?
With resistance? You know, that's a great question. And it also involves the collaboration and the absolute need for people to understand that we're part of a team, that we all may not get everything that we want. In fact, I embrace resistance. I don't want yes-men and women around me. I want people that are honest and that are forthcoming. And if we're doing something with a new street construction that's going to make the street department plow operations absolutely impossible, I want to hear that upfront. I want to hear that resistance, if you will, from the street foreman rather than waiting till it's constructed and finding out that they can't plow the street. That doesn't work for any of us. So I want that resistance to come forth in a proactive way, in a constructive way. If it's not happening that way, I want to have that discussion with the staff member who's, you know, throwing the bomb in the middle of the room or not participating until the 11th hour, things like that. Those are not appropriate behaviors. My approach to acting out in that way or any other kind of behavioral approach is pretty straightforward. I want to be in real time. I'm not waiting till the next annual performance evaluation. I want to be having a direct and frank discussion with someone. Not in a public meeting, but if I see that in a meeting, I want to immediately after call the person responsible aside and talk about the behavior. Not attacking them as a person, but just point out the behavior that's destructive. Point out the effects that that's having on the rest of the organization and the way it makes me feel and why that's not appropriate. I want to very clearly, firmly, with them, establish, reestablish the expectations. Remind them again, "Hey, we've got a couple of rules here. We don't surprise each other like this. We don't backstab, and we come together with alternatives and recommendations rather than just coming and throwing problems at each other." That's the expectation. Can you do that? Can you fulfill that? Will you fulfill that? And I need to hear, see that person look me in the eye and assure me that that can happen. And conclude that discussion, if you will, that behavior modification with a, passing along that it is their responsibility to take that action and make that correction and what the consequences may be if that can't happen. Life is too short for people to be in positions where they shouldn't be. And I've got a number of situations where, you know, it just doesn't work. It's not the right fit. Somebody's just too disgruntled or not able to take a good customer service approach to working with each other and with the community. They need to be successful elsewhere, and I'll help them do that.
Joe?
Tell us about a time when you were not able to remain calm under pressure. And what you did, what happened, and what you did about it.
I'm proud to say I'm having to think about that one because it's one of the things I bring to this and any job. I am a very calm person. What happens internally is something very different, and then I'll describe that to you. You won't ever hear an outburst from me. I'm not a screamer, not a yeller, I'm not a physical person. Those are not issues with me. Anger for me turns internal. I tend to be my own worst critic. And so if you or anyone else is angry with me, I've probably been angry with myself before you've expressed that. So I have very high standards of conduct and pursuit of excellence. I really want to do a great job. So what that looks like is, I'm an extroverted person. I'm very communicative. I try to be, as I say, and I take it very seriously, having fun at work. What happens whenever there's extraordinary pressure or something is turned unfairly or unfairly into harsh criticism, you'll see me get quiet. Not shut down by any means, but certainly I want to process internally what's happening. I want to be very careful about my next words or how I say it or whatever. I never want to be vindictive or come across as defensive. What you'll see is that I'll be requesting time to think about something or, "Gosh, can we, you know, I understand you're upset about this. Can we talk about this tomorrow?" So that both the person involved and myself can process and not deal with something in a very emotional way. Just the way I am, the way I prefer to work, I don't want to be guilty of saying something under pressure or under extreme criticism that I'm going to regret the next day. I just, I don't want to work that way. So my preference, certainly whenever possible, would be to respectfully ask some time to step away, get whatever anger or defensiveness out of, under control. The lake right across the street is a wonderful, has a wonderful path around it. You might see me on that in a time or two. Just processing, getting it, getting out of my system and come back to work fresh.
Experience a blowout at least once in your life, feeling so frustrated. It's just how you handle it afterwards.
Thank you, Kim.
In the interest of time, I'll let others ask their questions.
Hey, Jordan, do you have anything?
Yeah, quickly as well. Tell us about a time that you were new to a job. What steps did you take to build trust with your coworkers and staff?
A number of occasions, as I mentioned, I've been with the city of Aspen for a number of years now. But I've had the privilege to be in numerous different positions and to take on numerous diverse responsibilities along the way. It's one of the things I've absolutely loved about my current job is the opportunity to get a 360-degree view of the city. As I mentioned, being involved as oversight of a performing arts center. And I'll use that as my example. Determining, establishing my credibility and working with the then-executive director, the board of directors, the board of advisors that work with that team and certainly with the community, because they're a very strong arts community, performing arts, visual arts, et cetera, in the entire Orange Fork Valley. So they all have questions, logical questions. Who is this guy that's now going to be overseeing the Wheeler Opera House? What gives him the right to be stepping in here? What does he know about the arts? First of all, I was very upfront with them. You're right. I'm not an artist. I get that. But here's what I can bring to you. Because at that time, I had a firm understanding of municipal policies, procedures, budgeting, understood how to work with council. And I explained that to them. I said, "I'm not telling you how to run or who to program as your next Friday night artist, but what I can do is help you understand the budget, work with the executive director on goal-setting, on any kind of staff issues that may arise, on setting a vision and re-establishing a mission." Because at that time, the art center was all over the map with a director that wasn't particularly organized. I helped her get, work with staff better, understand that she needed to collaborate with them and be clear with direction. She wasn't communicating well. Those are the kinds of things that I can bring to the table. And I'm very upfront about that, that it's not necessarily substance. It's how we're doing things and how we're treating each other, helping her with her staff communication or council communication, her memos. I get that. I understand how to do those things. I understand how to accomplish goals. And so it's very refreshing to do that. And that's the approach I take with everything is, you won't see me, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to be telling the engineers what to do, but I can work with them on how to do it and what the priorities are, what the mission and goals are. And in being very open, very communicative, involving them in the goal-setting, and then the accountability. Okay, here are the goals, and you helped set these, and we're slipping on one or two. How can we correct that? So that's the approach that I take.
Awesome. Thank you.
Becky?
I'm going to let Antonio go, in the interest of time.
Excuse me. What's your worst professional quality?
My worst professional quality?
Because we have a blowout.
I haven't had one today, yeah. You know, one of the things that I'm aware of and am constantly working on, and I don't think it's a, it's something I have under control, but it's something I have a tendency to do. I, as I mentioned, I'm an implementer. I like to get things done. So my tendency, first of all, is to say yes. If you come to me, constituent comes to me with a project or a priority or whatever, I want to get things done. I don't want to disappoint. And so my, especially early in my career, my tendency, my approach was to say, "Sure. Yeah, got it. We'll do that." It doesn't take long before the plate is overloaded and expectations start being dashed. That constant reminder to myself is to set and manage realistic expectations. And so what you'll hear from me instead of just yes is often... And so what you'll hear from me instead of just yes is oftentimes, yes, but. Never no. No is never an answer, but no but might be an answer. And that has to do with a lot of service requests or priorities or whatever. The yes, yes, but may come in the form of, gosh, we've got this other project, three or four or five, six of us excited about it. Randy, can you do that? You may hear from me, yes, but what do you want us to take off the plate? What will slip? And I owe that to you, to be very clear about that and say, okay, sure, yes, we can do that, but is there something else that you've decided is lesser priority? So that's the caution that I take to trying to wanna do it all, do it all now.
Mercy?
I'm okay.
You're okay. Unfortunately, time is limited. So is there anything that you would like to ask us at this point?
Sure, and I really appreciate the opportunity to at least introduce myself and talk to each of you briefly before I came in, so I had a chance to ask some questions. But one that I have, continue to work on and try to understand is, what do you think the culture of Northland and the culture of this organization, what makes it unique or different? What's special about Northland to you all?
What is special? I mean, there's so many answers to that. You know, it's home, I mean, it's a great staff, very good council, great council. We want to have the city succeed. And I think we all have the same ideas or visions about the city as far as we want it to be economically healthy and to have our residents be happy living here and the businesses succeed. So I mean, it's just a variety of things.
Dionne?
I think everybody on the city council is very passionate about this city because of a deep-rooted love for the city and a desire to make it better. And that's what drives us. So we are, as pointed out, very unique personalities that share a passion for making the city better and leaving, however our terms end, leaving it a better place than we're in.
Great. Then in the interest of time, I guess my ultimate question will be, are there any concerns or questions that you have about me, my background, my portfolio of work? You haven't mentioned any, anything that I could address for you at all?
Not at this time, not for me. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm grateful for coming and applying. Thank you so much.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all.
Enjoy the rest of your day now.
You too.
I just wanna welcome you. Thank you for coming and applying. So just, yeah.
It's exciting to be here.
Thank you, thank you. Would you like to just kinda delve into your work plan for the year?
Sure, for sure.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I appreciate you coming last night. I know taking time out of your schedule to meet and greet is something that's important for us as the candidates, but hopefully it was helpful for you as well. I wanna give you a little overview. As part of this exercise, I was asked to develop a first-year game plan, and so I wanted to present that game plan to you. Being an engineer by background, I try to take complicated things, break them down into simplified manners, and then build them back up into complicated projects. So I kinda did that with my first-year game plan. And what I looked at is two functions that I needed to come forward with that I think will help me be successful as a city manager, help you be successful as a city council, and help our residents benefit from whatever achievements we can work collaboratively on. And with that, I broke it down into two steps. I call it the sleeves-down approach and the sleeves-up approach. And the sleeves-down approach is a outward communication plan, and that plan involves first and foremost, the council. I need to be able to meet with all of you, and I may have to twist arms and wrangle people in. I know you're all busy, but I really need to meet with each of you to understand what makes you tick, what your visions for the city are, what your goals you wanna accomplish. And those are things that I think having those face-to-face meetings will really help me understand how you operate, and it'll help me make better decisions as I move forward. Second, I have several other outreach efforts, and again, this is kind of my sleeves-rolled-down approach, which is keeping your hands clean, but going out and meeting and greeting the public, the staff, and as well as the council. Part of this includes, with the staff, I like to go out, not only meet with the executive team, but I wanna meet all the people in the city. That means going out to the parks and talking to the landscapers, going out to the water, wastewater treatment plant, talking to the operators and the people that actually are performing the work. It helps me learn about the process that the city's undergoing, the people that are performing those programs, and then helps me understand how best to move forward when I make decisions as a city manager. Also, I like to know about the heartbeat and the pulse of the community. All these outreach efforts really teach me about the community. So as I attend events, whether they're city events, whether they're civic organization events, those are things I like to attend and talk to people because getting that firsthand knowledge of what's happening in the city from those individuals is really valuable. And again, those drive a lot of the decisions that I make as a city manager. Boards and commissions, you have 10 boards and commissions. I'd like to be able to attend at least one of those during, for each of those boards during my first year here. There are focus groups that are looking at Parks and Rec and our youth commission and NERA, or whatever the board and commission is. Being able to attend those events, listen to what the issues are, again, is a meet and greet and understanding what the community is all about. And finally, there's two others that I put into my program, which is all of our inter-agency groups that we work with as a city. All of these inter-agencies, whether they're local cities, Adams County, RTD, whatever the organization is, those are the organizations I would like to be able to have discussions with. All the issues that are brought forward on their plates may affect what's happening here in the city. And so as part of that communication and collaboration, we need to be on the same page. And finally, one of the things that I think is really important, but it often gets overlooked, is doing a couple of police ride-alongs. Those police ride-alongs really teach you some of the issues that you never hear about in a city regarding social issues, crime, and even traffic, some of these things that happen in a city. So as part of my effort, when I come on the first year, it would be to do some police ride-alongs and really learn about what's happening that maybe some things aren't talked about. So that's my sleeves-down approach. And the sleeves-up approach is where the hands get dirty. And that's learning about all the different departments and jumping into the programs and projects that the city is undertaking. As part of that, I need to really get involved with the planning department, building and safety, public works, all the capital projects they have. I need to be involved with all the redevelopment that's happening. Learning about everything from the technology department and social media, all those are key elements that help make a city function. And so getting my hands dirty, learning how the operations work with each of those departments is important. And finally, I'll say this, is that the, I know one of the main projects on the plate here at the city is the justice center. And knowing how to best bring that forward and working with all the departments on that, it's just not a police department issue, it's a capital projects issue, and there's a technology items on there and everything from purchasing furniture and trying to be environmentally sound and good stewards of the environment with those projects. So all of those efforts come together as I move forward in the first year. So knowing that that's a high priority for the city council, those are things that I think as a city manager I need to jump into. Again, it's a very simplified approach, and at the end of the day, I will say this, one of the things that's going to help me become effective is to have a balance of work and life. And sometimes I can get absorbed into work, and that's not good for my home life. So having that balance and making sure I stay on an even keel is a good thing for me. So I think that's my presentation.
Oh, very good. Okay. So tell me, is there anything at this point, anything else you would like to tell us about yourself or what you might think about the city planning?
For sure. Well, I'll tell you a little background on me, first of all. I was, I grew up, at least all the way up till high school in Montana, so I'm used to the cold. The cold doesn't scare me. Being from California now, I know that may be a concern. My wife, being from California, has never really experienced the cold, so it'll be something new for her, too. I moved to Northland when I was in high school. I attended Northland High, graduated there, went on to Colorado State University where I earned a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. From there, I worked with a couple of local cities. As my first jobs out of college, I worked for initially Greenwood Village as an engineering technician, and then went over to Commerce City as a civil engineer one. They said, go west, young man, so I went west and went out to California and worked for a couple of cities out there. Initially, Simi Valley, which is a city of about 100,000, 150,000 people, large organization, and I worked in their public works department, had a lot of fun projects, everything from the Reagan Library to large redevelopment and development projects. So gained a lot of experience from there. Eventually, I became a public works director and city engineer for a city called Agura Hills, which is a kind of a sleepy little bedroom community of 35,000, very similar to Northland in that sense, as far as population goes. And eventually, they also made me their assistant city manager, and I was responsible for many of the departments, including Parks and Rec, building and safety, and as well as capital projects and engineering. From there, I went to Malibu, where I became their city manager. The city of Malibu, which many people don't know, it's actually a young city. It's 25 years old, coming up this month. And the first 15 years of that city, they had 11 different city managers, and they were going through them quite rapidly. And then they hired me, and that stopped. And I've been there for 10 years. I love that city. I love the council, the residents. It's been a great working place, but for me, I'm looking for a chance to do something different, and I've got family out here. I've got my daughter who attends Colorado State, and I'm looking to come back.
Thank you. All right, Carol?
Jim, can you give us an example of a time when you needed to reduce expenses and how you determined where to cut the costs and what the impact of your decision was?
Well, and that's part of the ongoing job of a city manager, is looking at the financial reports and the budget, and it's a daily operation. And over my career, especially in Malibu, I've looked to save money. And with the city of Malibu, in the last 10 years, we've gone from an $8 million general fund reserve to a $20 million general fund reserve. And the reason we've done that is because we have natural disasters that happen in Malibu on a regular basis, and we need to be prepared for those natural disasters, whether it's fires, floods, earthquakes, or the highway sliding off into the ocean. Those are some of the things that we deal with on a constant basis. So being able to improve that bottom line of the city was important to the council and important to me. And we achieve that through a variety of means. You can save a lot, especially on capital projects, depending on the design, the construction, and how you manage those projects. Your capital projects are one of your biggest expenditures. Looking to do designs in-house may be really beneficial. It may save you money, but it may also delay projects because they may be overworked and overburdened. So you have to balance those issues. One of the things, for example, when I worked at a city of, at the city of Agura Hills, especially in capital projects, they had floodplain problems, and the city wanted to hire somebody to do a floodplain analysis and remove certain properties out of the floodplain. We got a cost estimate from an engineering firm to do those costs, which was right around $200,000 to do. They call them the HECS RAS. I apologize if I'm using terminology, but they use a HECS RAS program to go into details of the floodplain. And after thinking about it, I thought I could do a lot of the calculation myself. It was clear they were out of the floodplain. I submitted the information, and FEMA accepted those floodplain changes and got everybody out of the floodplain, and it didn't really cost the city, other than my time, that kind of financial burden. I've done that with other projects as well, whether it's overlay projects, doing the design in-house. We used to hire a lot of our pavement overlay programs with consultants. We've eliminated those, done them in-house. They're fairly easy to do. You don't need to spend a lot of money on design work. So those are just really simple things that can be done to help save some of those funds. And then when it comes to staffing, I've made some changes over the years with regards to staffing. We've kept the city, there tends to be always an annual increase in staffing that happens with cities. When I got to the city of Malibu, we had 65 of full-time employees. We still have 65 full-time employees 10 years later. So keeping control of the staffing, how that happens. And then one of the other things that we've done when I first got there, we had, I mentioned to you, the department had yesterday, we had a five-step program where employees within five years went from step one at the bottom of the step in salaries up to step five, which was a significant increase. And that happened in the first five years, and it was a 5% increase for every employee every time the annual reviews came around. And so I implemented a 10-year program and 2.5% increases. And of course, that made me really popular with employees, but I think everybody recognized that that needed to be done in order to tighten the belts.
Good morning.
Morning.
So there was a story on NPR yesterday that according to the National Association of Realtors, millennials now make up the largest segment of homebuyers in the nation. What innovative ideas do you have to ensure that Northland stays on the cutting edge of this new marketplace?
That's a great question, and as we have, as I age, I see more and more young people. I don't know how that happens, but people like yourself, I'll say, are more engaged through electronic means and social media, and they get all their information online now instead of hard print. Personally, I like the hard print, but a lot of the younger generation, they do everything via their phones and computers. So doing outreach efforts, and what I've seen from Northland is they've got a pretty robust outreach effort via Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and other means, even Nextdoor, which is kind of the local homeowners association outreach. Those are good efforts in which you can reach especially the millennials as they come up through the process. One of the other things, having interactive websites, especially with potential projects that you've got coming online, whether it's a new park or a new community center area that you wanna engage the residents. Right now in Malibu, we are working on an expansion of one of our parks, and so we've done an interactive website where people can vote on which piece they like, whether it's a skateboard park, whether it's a gymnasium. Those are the elements, I think. And it's easy for the millennials. They just click, 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 and they're engaged.
Thank you.
Thank you for that compliment, again.
Joe?
Tell us about a time when you had to sell your idea to council. What was it and what happened?
Well, let me think about that. Generally, I don't have to do much selling to the council because usually there's a lot of prep work that goes into that before we ever get to the council meeting.
Well, it's the prep work, you've got to sell.
As part of that prep work, it's knowing the facts and the issues. And so whether you're trying to establish that you wanna purchase a piece of property and here's the reasons why, and this makes good sense, and you've got a couple of council members, for example, totally on board, it's the three or four or five that you may need to have those discussions with that will say, why do we wanna do this? Why do we wanna spend the city resources to go out and do those type of efforts? So I think laying out the framework as to why it's going to benefit the residents, why it's going to benefit the city, are we going to be able to save money? Are we going to be able to improve our communications, whatever the issue may be? I think having those discussions and evaluating all sides of those with each council member, and then during a council session, having that final decision made. I guess that may be not the best answer that you're looking for, but I think, hopefully, that takes into my approach.
It works.
Yes. Yes.
Kim.
We have, as a council, a lot more information than our residents have about your qualifications. So, can you just talk to us a little bit about why you're the best candidate for our city manager and your experience overseeing all the service areas that is involved?
Great, yeah. Well, you do have a lot. I was kidding Ron that this was one of the most rigorous recruitments I've ever been involved in, but actually, I'm lacking a lot of recruitment experience because I just don't go out and apply to a position. So, over the last 20 years, I probably have done this three or four times, but it's pretty rare for me to get engaged into this type of recruitment. Why I'm the best candidate? I think, one, I have 32 years of experience, first and foremost. I've, I've been involved in all facets of organizations, everything from police to planning, to public works, to parks and rec, to building and safety, to finance, to IT. All the departments that you have, I've managed in some form or fashion. So, I have a lot of experience doing that. Two, I think my experience with the city of Malibu is really valuable, as 10 years as a city manager. I used to think, as an assistant city manager and public works director, I would often look at the city manager's position as, "I could do that. That seems pretty easy." Those decisions he's making, I would have made those same decisions, or maybe different. But when you're actually the one making those decisions, it's a lot different. And it's, because, first of all, you have, in this case, nine council members that you're trying to make sure you understand where everybody wants to go and how best to approach that. And as a staff or department head, you don't always have that insight. And so, when it comes to these decisions, a lot of thought has to go into them, and when you bring things and issues and programs and projects forward, it takes a lot more effort than just what appears on the service, surface. And I think I can bring that type of approach here in, in Northland. And finally, I will say this, is that I do have, because of my growing up here and feeling like this is my hometown, I think I have a really nice feel for the city overall. I have a lot of respect for what you guys do, and I think, I think I would be a perfect fit for this job.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you. What was the biggest mistake you've made in your work? What did you do about it, and what did you learn from that?
We don't make mistakes. Well, and I think I may have expressed this, I don't know, to one or two council members, but one of the, and it was an honest mistake. So, it's one of those things during political season, when all the signs are going up in the city, and everybody's campaigning, and the one thing that, as a city staff person, you want to do is stay away from a campaign as far as you can. Let, let the council members, let all the electeds and those running for office do their thing. But at the same time, in Malibu, it becomes a free-for-all with the signs, and we have nighttime sign brigades that come out, and they post signs everywhere they can, you could possibly post a sign in medians, on stop signs, and wherever they can post it, they're all over the place. And so, we've always had a public works crew. We've given them direction. They go pick up the signs in the medians and off the stop signs and all those type of things. But we had a brand-new crew that wasn't quite experienced in picking up signs. And so, they went to homes, in front of homes, even though it's technically the parkway and public right-of-way, people feel like it's their, their land, and they picked up all the signs in front of the homes. And next thing I know is I'm getting all kinds of calls, and there's a couple of articles in the newspaper, and the city hall is packed, and the only thing that was right was just to apologize and say, "You know what? We made a mistake. It was an honest mistake. It wasn't intentful. It wasn't to hurt any particular election group, and at the end of the day, we gave the signs back, and then it died down."
I like it.
The nighttime sign brigade.
Yes.
So, what in your opinion does a city, situated as we are, need to do to design and guide its growth in order to achieve sustainability? Sorry. Livability and quality of place and avoid the predictable cycle of growth and decay?
Could you repeat that one more time? I apologize.
Did I not say that one more? What in your opinion does a city, situated as we are, need to do to design and guide its growth in order to achieve sustainability, livability, and quality of place for the long term to avoid predictable cycles of growth and decay in a typical city?
Well, Northland, as we all know, is, is landlocked, and so, with that, you've got to be able to look at a couple of things with regards to sustainability. One, there has to be a fiscal sustainability. I think there also has to be an environmental sustainability that everybody utilizes. And as part of that, the fiscal sustainability is making sure that the businesses here are utilized, occupied, and returning those sales tax funds back to the city. Those funds help us drive what could be infrastructure repairs and needs. You have probably somewhat of an aging infrastructure coming on, and you need to make, make sure that those are all up to date. I looked at the long list of capital projects, and it looks like those things are being done. But at the same time, we need to map out those costs over the next 20 years and make sure that whatever funds we're putting aside, that we have sufficient funds that we will maintain that infrastructure. With the environment, a couple of things, I will say that I'm a big environmental proponent. I'm not a tree hugger, but I do like the environment and trying to protect it, and having that balance. One of the things we have done over in Malibu is looked at water sustainability because that's critical for our infrastructure there, and we're, we are building a wastewater treatment plant in the near future, and part of that includes taking that 500,000 gallons of wastewater and turning it into usable water for our residents and for landscaping purposes. We have three parks surrounding the wastewater treatment area. That alone will utilize 100,000 gallons a day, and so, we're able to take ourselves away from trying to use potable water and use recycled water, which is good not only for the environment, but it's also good for everyone's wallet. So, and then finally, I'll say this, having those master plans in place for long-term sustainability, whether it's the housing or the business or the industrial needs, making sure that those master plans are current. You tend to need to evaluate those on a periodic basis and make sure that they're still of value, and as you're looking at that sustainability plan, ensuring that, you know, as, as the world cycle changes, that we're also moving with that.
Perfect. Thanks. Antonio.
Would you describe the most culturally diverse environment that you've worked in? Tell us one difficulty you encountered and how you handled it?
Well, at the time, probably the most culturally diverse or challenging would have been Commerce City. And for me, because there was a large Hispanic population there, and, and the Hispanic population tends not to get too involved in government overall, and trying to do some outreach and make sure that they're involved in, in government is, in some form or fashion, was important. I don't speak Spanish, so sometimes having the ability to communicate with individuals that don't speak English well was a challenge. I will also say, in, in Simi Valley, which was about 150,000, it was a pretty diverse community as well, and again, the same type of issues, whether they're social issues or just even language barriers, was probably some of the most challenging.
Just a quick follow-up. Why do you think that Hispanics don't want to get involved?
Well, it's just been my experience. I can't say, I know we've got two on board here, and I acknowledge that, but it's just been my experience. I'm also married to a Hispanic, and in the family, they tended to stay away from government, and, and I don't know exactly all the reasons, and I, but I will say, that's just generally what I felt.
Marcy.
Tell us about a time when you were overwhelmed with your own tasks but still had to make yourself available to staff. How did you do it?
That's, that's a challenge, yeah. When, you know, part of that getting your hands dirty means that you may be involved in, in trying to solve some issues, and then at the same time, you, you have a large staff trying to take time away because they have other issues that are pending. So, you end up spending a lot of hours at work and trying to resolve things that you can resolve. But I'd like to be able to have an open-door communication style with the staff and make sure that even though I'm busy, they can come in and ask questions and, and resolve issues, hopefully. A lot of times, it's better just to get things done, and you can stop your work for a few minutes, answer a question or two, and then give direction, and then that problem is resolved, and you can continue on.
Okay. Can you tell me how you can, excuse me, communicate project changes and progress to the appropriate people, and what procedures do you use to do that?
Well, with council, there's a variety of methods. Obviously, I like to do a lot of face-to-face meetings and give progress updates so that we can have good discussions about those. In addition to that, I give weekly updates to the council via email, and I like to identify some of the challenges, especially as we're moving forward. If there's delays on something, if there's progress on something, the milestones have been met. So, having that continual progress, either face-to-face or electronically with the council, is important. With staff, it's kind of the same approach. We need to meet and discuss issues and collaborate and see if we can come up with solutions to the problems that are, that are arising. Sometimes, there are other agencies, and we need to get on the phone with those agencies and see if we can get some assistance. But we can track projects via electronically. I always keep information on my calendar that says when we're going to city council, when we're going to planning commission, or what issues may be involved, and I continually check that and make sure that we're on target and continue to meet those dates.
Thank you.
Okay.
From the time that you've thus far spent in Northland, what do you foresee would be your greatest challenge should you become manager, and how would you overcome it?
I think the two biggest challenges I see are, one, really understanding how the police department functions and making sure I know how they operate, how they're deploying individuals, how, how their morale is. Having a police force is something I haven't had direct oversight of. In the city of Malibu, we have a sheriff department that's run by the county sheriff. We do oversee, in a sense, their operations, but a lot of times, the nice thing about having a contract sheriff department is we don't have to deal with their personnel issues that they deal with, and knowing that we, you know, with all police department, there's a lot of personnels, whether people are injured on duty, and so you have a lot of issues with the police department. The other is redevelopment, because redevelopment is not necessarily always in the city's hands. You're dealing with property owners and individuals, and trying to make sure that as you move forward with redevelopment, you've got a good program, and whether you need to use eminent domain on a particular property, or whether you can get cooperation and try to get some changes through just discussions is important. The capital projects are easy.
It's good to hear that.
Kyle.
I know that you addressed some of your ideas for Northland in your first-year campaign. With that being said, how do you plan on getting your leadership team to buy into your vision on how you want the city to be ran, and how would you deal with any resistance?
Well, as part of the city operation, first and foremost, I think we have to be responsive to the clients, and in this case, our clients are our residents. And having a, a positive approach with our residents, every interaction with the city needs to be as positive as we can make it, and so, having a frontline of staff that can project a positive image for the city is where I'd like to go. I think leading that group by example is where I, I tend to fall on. And I've been in many meetings where things will get heated, and at the same time, bringing a little levity to the situation is always helpful. And at the same time, you need to communicate those ideas on a regular basis and consistently. So, whether it's training, whether it's communication for the managers, it's got to come from the top on down, and everybody's got to buy into that program. So, when you have an executive team that may not be following the process, I think it's just a simple discussion you've got to continue to have with that executive team leader, and make sure that they understand why and, and the hows and, and what they're not doing, and if that doesn't work out, then we'll take other, other means to that.
Joe.
So, you mentioned being heated in, in some of these meetings. Tell us about a time where you lost your calm under pressure and what happened?
Well, if you talk to a lot of people, they'll say, "I don't lose my calm very often, almost never." But when I get mad, two things are going to happen. Either, 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 either I'm going to become extremely quiet and, and you're going to, you're going to be looking at my stare down, down into your eyes, or two, we're going to end up in some rough words. But either way, it rarely, rarely happens, and it's, let's see, well, I've had a few instances where I've gone, you know, toe-to-toe with department heads, and I've had, had words, and, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, hopefully, you can make up, and then you become even better relations with it. I, I had a city council member, very upset with me one time, slammed, slammed his books down on the desk, walked out the door, slammed the door, and, but to this day, that guy will tell you, "I'm the best hire he ever had." So...
So, what did you do? Chase him down?
No, I didn't chase him down. There was no point in chasing him down at that point. He was mad, and you got to let things calm down a little bit, and, and I had a couple of email correspondence with him. It took a while, but at the end of the day, I think he realized, and I realized, that we're better off working together and, and solving issues than being angry at each other. And it was really a personal issue, and, and we got over it.
Okay. Kim.
So, can you just tell us a little bit about the council manager forms of government that you've worked with, and then how that, those experiences will relate and make you effective, and you have nine bosses, where we all have sometimes different goals and ways to reach those goals and agendas?
For sure. Well, and I always start this off by saying, I was raised with nine siblings, and so I come from a large family, and so dealing with nine brothers and sisters is certainly challenging, but it's not something I'm really uncomfortable with. I've always had five council members, and, and it's always, when you've got five independent decision-makers, it's always a little challenging, kind of, as they say, circling the hens and making sure we're all get back onto the same path. Nine's going to even be a little more challenging. But part of it is, is learning what's going to push your buttons, what's, what are your goals and desires, and making sure that, at least as we're moving forward, I've got all nine individual thoughts running through my head as we're putting a program together. So, does that answer your question?
How do you motivate and inspire those who work for you to achieve their goals?
I didn't...
How do you motivate and inspire those who work for you to achieve their goals?
Well, it's always a, that's always a tough question, and hopefully, you have individuals, first and foremost, that are self-motivated. And for me, I've always been self-motivated, so I've, I always kind of question, why, why isn't somebody motivated about a particular item? So, then you, you kind of break it down into, well, what's, what's the issue here? Are they not being challenged professionally? Are they on projects that they don't like? Is it in an area or field that they don't really want to be in? And part of understanding what's, what somebody is not motivated about may, may mean that you can turn them around in some other form or fashion. I've always looked at other issues than money, for example, as being a motivator. You know, for me, money was never a motivator. It always helped, but it wasn't a motivator. It always helped, but it wasn't a motivator. And if we find somebody who's, would rather be doing something else, maybe there's ways to engage that person into competitions with his fellow workers. I mean, there's just a lot of different ways. For me, I'm more at the executive team level, and so part of that is making sure that the executive team is managing those people that may or may not have that same type of motivation.
Becky. I want to talk about passion. I like passion. What, and there's a couple of little questions in here, okay? What drives you? What are you passionate about? And when you look at those two questions, how does the city of Northland fit into your passion?
That's a great question. And if you read some of my interview or my questionnaires, there's a quote in there, and it came from when I was taking my MPA classes through Northridge, Cal State Northridge. And there was a social worker who kind of coined the phrase, and I've adopted it, and I utilize it in teaching with the staff, is that in today's government, you've got to do more. And then it became, not only that, you've got to do more with less. Budget times, crisis, you learn to do more with less. And then the final kicker was, is that you've got to do more with less, and you've got to love it. And that's where you really tell the good employees from the bad employees. And for me, I love local government. I love working in local government. I like working in small government. Huge organizations, you kind of get cubbyholed into things. But here in small organizations, you get to do a lot of variety of different things. And that's what, that's what I love, and that's the passion I have. And being an engineer, I love to see things built. So I like to see construction happen. I love to see improvements made. At the end of the day, you know, every city I've ever been at, I kind of look back and say, is that city better off when I started as compared to when I left? And I want to make sure when I leave, it's in much better shape than when I started.
Thank you.
Yes.
Antonio.
Can you tell me what your worst professional quality might be?
Let's see, worst professional quality? Wow.
So many to choose from.
I'm stumped. Well, I will say this, it's taken me a while to get, you know, being an engineer, so here's the joke about engineers, and is that, how can you tell the extrovert engineer? Well, he's the one who looks at your shoes. And so the engineer, by nature, is kind of an introvert. And so for me to kind of be a little bit of an extrovert is something that's a little bit of a challenge for me, something that I've worked on and grown on. Fortunately, you know, my dad is a very quiet person, a very deep thinker, and I get a lot of traits from him. My mom is the complete opposite. She's bubbly. She likes to have that social interaction. And somehow, hopefully, I can balance those two efforts. So, you know, that's something I've learned to grow on and develop a little better than when I started out. So that's been probably my biggest challenge.
Tell us about the most difficult citizen encounter you've had experienced, and how did you handle it?
Boy, that's another one, a long list. Well, I've had a lot of angry citizens over my days. But at the end of the day, when they come in and you deal with that angry person, you want to be able to give them a fair shot. You want to be able to listen to them. You want to be able to explain why things are or not happening. And at the end of the day, I've been able to diffuse a lot of those angry situations. And I had an individual call me the other day who was really upset with one of our staff responses that he received. And I gave the same response, but at the same time, he said, you know what, I really like dealing with you a lot better than the other guy because you explain things and you help me understand why things are happening the way they are. So, you know, part of dealing with an angry citizen is part of the job.
Our time is almost over. So do you have any questions for us?
We still have 15 minutes.
Okay, you want me to go?
We can go for a third question. I mean, it's a world record. We haven't dated that far.
Maybe I'm being too brief. I don't know.
No, no, no. Okay, let me just see here. Well, I can, we will, you know, I'm going to pass on this. Okay, go ahead, Kira.
Okay. Describe a situation where you worked with someone you did not like or respect, and how you coped with that relationship.
Well, I'll go back to my days in Simi Valley. I had a fellow coworker that we didn't get along. And the reason we didn't get along is, one, I didn't think he was pulling his weight in doing what he was supposed to be doing. He was often gone out of the office on field visits. And so I felt like, you know, I'm doing all the work. He seems to be gone doing things that I have no idea where he's at. And it kind of came to a head, and we had a discussion with the city engineer. And in general, I thought he was untruthful. I thought he was fabricating issues. And at the end of the day, I think the reality is, is that when you're honest and bring your work forward, those things will rule the day. And if you're out there doing things that you shouldn't be doing, that individual is gone.
Give us an example of a time when you could not meet an agreed-to deadline. What did you do?
The one instance that comes to mind is that I had a large interchange project in Agoura Hills, about a $20 million interchange that we were doing over the US-101. And it was a widening project. And we had designed, had been working with our design consultants, and we had gone through this process for about two years, which is standard for Caltrans time. And we had a pretty good design. We had gone through, they call it their geometrician for the last two years, and had developed a hook ramp system for this new interchange. And after two years, the geometrician said, I don't like the hook ramp anymore. Let's not do the hook ramp. And we're going to do a straight ramp right off the freeway onto the roadway. And that immediately means we're two years behind schedule because it's going to take another two years to get that done. The first thing is, you've got to communicate that. At the time, I was public works director to the city manager, and that all had to be relayed to the council because they're anticipating that interchange is going to get done in a certain timeframe. It's never, it's never an easy acceptance to be behind schedule, and I don't like to be behind schedule. But that was one of those instances where, at the end of the day, it was something outside of our control that we couldn't control anymore, and it was unfortunate. But we did finish as quickly as we could, and that interchange did get rebuilt, but it just took longer than we wanted.
What's the most surprising thing you've heard, good or bad, about Northland?
Well, I'll say this, I've heard a lot of things about Northland. And typically, I've heard, you know, they're moving in the right direction. I've heard that you've got a new kind of risk-taking council that's willing to jump out there and do some things that maybe the previous councils weren't. I think I also heard that in past, that the Northland may be a little hard on city managers. But I also heard that when I came to Malibu. And so that, those things don't scare me. At the end of the day, I think having that collaboration, I think we can all get to the places we want to get to. The council wants their goals and desires fulfilled. I think our residents would like to see those changes. And at the end of the day, for you guys to be successful, for me to be successful, my staff needs to deliver those items, and I think we can do that.
Okay. Kim.
Thanks.
I want to, I want to try to trip you up. What was your worst day of life? What was that like for you? Your very worst day you've ever had? And don't go back to, like, Elgin, as you know.
Wow. Well, as, you know, over the last 10 years, being a city manager, you have a lot of rough days. And you try to balance those out with a lot of good days. The worst day I ever had, I would say probably, really, the worst day I ever had is talking about that council member that really got angry at me. Because I've never really had that happen to me in that form or fashion before. And it really questioned your ability to, you know, am I doing the right thing, or what could I have done differently? And being new to that city council and being new on that city staff was something that was a little bit challenging for me. But I never felt like, you know, that's going to knock me down. I always felt like this is just something I need to resolve and come back and address the next day. And it was just a kind of another challenge on my plate. But you tend to have days where you get beat up a little bit, but that's okay.
Do you internalize that process to come back the next day and be able to let it go, or two days later and let it go? How do you internalize that?
Well, yeah, and I've had staff ask me that a lot, too. It's like, Jim, how do you let those things just go off your back? And I think that's part of the process of being a city manager, is you can't really get too involved in, you know, the council didn't go my way, or that was really a bad decision. You have to just let things, okay, that's the direction we're headed now, and we're going to move forward. So I have pretty thick skin, and I think you need it in this position. And I've been challenged on many occasions. I've had, you know, hundreds of people in a council room questioning what the council's doing, what I'm doing. But you learn to deal with those things, and part of it is just developing that thick skin, knowing you're doing the right thing and letting those other issues roll off your back.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that answer. Antonio.
What was your best day?
Wow, we have a lot of those. I like ribbon cutting, so those are always good days.
Ever?
My best day ever? Well, I'll just, I've had a lot of great days, you know, from personal to professional. And, you know, passing my PE exam was a great day, you know, getting your license, that was very significant for me. You know, personally, getting married and having kids, those were great days. From a professional standpoint, you know, we built a park called Legacy Park, and you may have had an opportunity to look at it. And I'm really, really proud of that park. And having that ribbon cutting and knowing that the council, you know, saw a project that came in on time, that was really well-received by the community, and it was an engineering achievement, I think, is, at the end of the day, probably one of my best days.
And I'm going to ask you, do you have any questions for us?
You know, I think I'll just leave today as it is. And I know I have a lot of questions, but I think there'll probably be another time for those.
All right. That's great. Well, thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. It's been great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Before we break, I need to go into executive session, so soon as Susan gets back here. Okay. Ready? Can I turn it off? No, no, you're fine. Okay. Tell me when.
No cheese allowed.
I'm ready. All right. I'd like to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Section 4.5, P. R. N. B. of the City of Northland Home Royal Charter for the review of applications for any appointed position. Interviews and appointments shall be conducted at an open meeting. And two, pursuant to Section 4.5, P. R. N. G. of the City of Northland Home Royal Charter for negotiations concerning contracts except those required to be the subject of competitive bidding. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are in executive session.